Ms. Galante, would you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Kroner.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Here.
Mrs. Randall.
Here.
Mr. Ray.
Here.
Mrs. Weber.
Here.
Mrs. Speed.
She will be here late. We'd like to begin this evening then with an opportunity for public comment with respect to items that are not scheduled for discussion on this evening's agenda. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly-scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised; however, it is not the intent of the public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. So if there is anyone who would like to offer public comment on an item that is not on this evening's agenda, you may do so at this time by coming forward to the microphone in the center of the room, giving us your name and address, and then your comment. And if there are no comments on non-agenda items, we will move on to our consent agenda. Are there any -- or are there any items on this evening's consent agenda which a Board member would like to remove for separate discussion or action? If not, may I have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
So move.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Randall. There is the monthly check register is here this evening, should anyone care to look for it or look at it. Is there any public comment relating to this evening's consent agenda? If not, Ms. Galante, would you call the roll, or then to the consent agenda?
Mr. Kroner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Weber.
Yes.
And we move on to the recognitions portion of our meeting. Mr. Kroner.
Thank you. Wauwatosa East High School student newspaper, The Cardinal News, and Wauwatosa West High School student newspaper, Westside Stories, both won national recognition at the JEANSPA, which is the Journalism Education Association, and National Scholastic Press Association National High School Journalism Conference, held in Kansas City. Both papers won recognition in the NSPA Best of Show competition in the category of newspapers of eight pages or less. The Cardinal News placed seventh in the competition, and Westside Stories finished eighth. Kelly Ainsley is the editor of The Cardinal News, and the newspaper's advisor is Elena Meyer. Angie O'Brien is the editor of Westside Stories, and the publications advisor is Christopher Lazarsky. The Best of Show competition is held at all national and state conventions sponsored by the NSPA. NSPA is a nonprofit membership organization exclusively for high school and other secondary school publications: your books, newspapers, magazines, broadcast programs, and online publications. Since 1921, NSPA has offered its members resources to help improve their publications, including national high school journalism conventions, prestigious contests and scholarships, a publication critique service, and much more. The JEA is the only independent national scholastic journalism organization for teachers and advisors.
The Kiwanis Club of Wauwatosa has donated $500 to the district's Project Lead the Way, or PLTW Club, to help fund this year's activities. The PLTW Club has created -- was created to encourage and support those students who are participating in the district's Project Lead the Way curriculum. This year, the PLTW partnership team is building district club capacity to expand beyond curricular opportunities. With the help of volunteers, the PLTW Club, with support from the district partnership team, is also starting a speaker and mentoring group that will feature engineers, scientists, and architects who will take time to speak about their professions and work with the students. PLTW prepares students to be the most innovative and productive leaders in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. The district currently offers PLTW curriculum in -- at East and West High Schools. The curriculum will expand to Longfellow and Whittaker Little Schools beginning the next school year.
So another thank you to the Kiwanis Club for that donation, and congratulations to both of the high school newspapers for their recognitions. Next, let's move on to our action items, beginning with buildings and grounds. Mr. Meyer.
Mr. Ray, if I may first informally recognize a recent event Friday. The West High School We the People Team won the state competition for the fourth year in a row. The pressure was on the class that not to be the one to break the string, and they pulled through. I'm sure there will be a formal, appropriate announcement, you know, with names and advisory names and things at the next meeting, but given their large gallery this evening, I thought it nice to, you know, beat the drum a little bit about the good things. All right, now back to--
Mr. Meyer.
Who is the advisor for We the People at Wauwatosa West?
Oh, you caught me there. Chad.
Ted Matusky.
Thank you. I think he needs that recognition, too.
Mr. Kroner.
I'm just going to add, I sat through the competition for one of the East High School teams, and according to what I saw from them, which is excellent, if West won the competition, they must be very, very good. I mean, both high schools put in a lot of work, and they acquitted themselves very, very well at the state competition.
Action items?
Yes, sir. It is recommended that the School Board approve and place on file the proposed capital maintenance improvement plan for the 2011-12 year with individual projects to be approved by the School Board throughout the year, as presented and discussed at the December 13 Board Meeting, and I so move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Discussion, questions or comments from Board members? Mrs. Randall.
At the last meeting, I did talk a little bit about the $100,000 for the improvements at the science area at East High School, hoping that we could perhaps move that up. Given the report we just got on the advancement of the Project Lead the Way science program, I'm wondering if you've had any enlightened ideas since then? I know other Board members brought it up in relationship to the tennis courts, so I can just--
We've actually had a lot of discussions with Mr. Johnson, myself, Mr. Mack, and others as well, looking at the curriculum process and curriculum review and trying to align -- not trying, aligning the science lab updating with the curriculum review and really looking at the timeline. Maybe Mr. Johnson wants to talk a little bit more about that, but trying to align it so next summer, the summer of '12 is the year that the labs would be updated and the curriculum would be in place for the '12-'13 school year.
And after some of the questions were asked at the last Board meeting, I went back and did a little further review through some of the resources that I have with planning and design, architectural review and so forth of science curriculums. And everything that I found said, "Let the curriculum lead the way for planning and design." So again, my recommendation with regard to science would still be that I'd like to see that come back to the Board for next summer so that we can follow and learn a lot as we go through the curriculum review. Project Lead the Way, I have met with Bill Anderson, with principals and other staff at three of the four secondary sites, and we're looking at some revisions that will be necessary to some of the classroom space to properly prepare for that, but that does not involve any of the science rooms at all.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Other questions or comments? Mr. Kroner.
Yes, I'd raised the topic about the science labs last meeting also, and I understand that coupling it with the curriculum review makes sense to me, so I agree with that. One question I have, though, is about the $400,000 for the tennis court reconstruction. And I was looking at the Administrative Athletic Field Plan Committee plan from 2006, and they list that project at $175,000. Is that just a natural growth in costs over time, or is it a different project now than it was then?
And, Mr. Kroner, I would have to go back to some of the earlier notes. I think that number may actually go back even further than that. That number might go back to about 2002 or '03, and it was still used at that time in that report because we hadn't met or worked with any architectural representation. So again, I'd have to be sure that I knew, you know, specifically what report you were looking at, but most of the work that I've done with this number is associated with the recent work that was done at Hart Park, so we feel like we're pretty accurate with what the numbers are likely going to be.
Okay. And I'm going to say, you know, you do tremendous work for the district, and I've decided that I'm not -- I normally always support this proposal. I'm not going to support it tonight, not because of any decisions you have made. But the theme I'm going to throw out at this time is that we have a number of large projects that we're considering, and this particular project and this item is for $400,000. And I'm just going to vote against this proposal at this time because I think as we think about the proposals that are before us, we need to think of our priorities and kind of decide whether, you know, this is where we want to put this kind of money at this time versus spending it in other areas of our curriculum. So I -- the work that our grounds department does is outstanding, and they keep the buildings in great shape, but I'm just going to not support this at this time because I think maybe that $400,000 could either better be spent on maybe another building project or maybe on some curriculum issues that we might be talking about.
Other questions or comments? Not, is there any community comment with respect to our buildings and grounds action Seeing none, Ms. Galante, would you call the roll?
Mr. Kroner.
No.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. Then let's move on to student learning. Mrs. Randall.
It is recommended that the School Board approve the Advanced Placement AP Statistics course and the restructuring of the Advanced Placement AP Calculus AB/B/C courses for the 2011-2012 school year, as presented and discussed at the December 13, 2010 meeting, and I so move.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Milfeld. Any discussion, questions, or comments with respect to the student learning action item? Mr. Meyer.
Sure. Again, for the many people here, we encourage students to try this class. Statistics is different from other types of math-oriented classes, far different from calculus, and it's quite enjoyable for the creative math mind.
Any other Board member questions or comments? If not, is there any community comment with respect to the student learning action item? Seeing none, Mrs. Galante.
Mr. Kroner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld.
Yes.
Mrs. Randall.
Yes.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Mrs. Weber.
Yes.
And we move on to reports to the Board, beginning with business services. And I see Mr. Mack is positioning himself to give us a presentation with related to debt, defeasance.
Mr. Ray.
Yes.
Just kind of out of topic, but do you know if there are other chairs in the building that we might look for to give people more seats?
Mr. Johnson would probably be the person who could best speak to that.
I will go on the search.
Thank you.
[laughing]
Thank you.
Mr. Mack.
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have Lisa Voison here from Robert W. Baird for review. I don't know if you remember or not, but I'll just refresh your memory. We -- I presented a report on this back before we passed the budget in October, and it was included in the budget, but I wanted to have a representative from our financial advising company here to just review it because we will prove it at the next Board Meeting as a formal resolution. So I'm going to let Lisa explain this to you, and if you have any questions, the information is in your Board packet. It should be more of a review than anything else, and I think should go over one of the key points that perhaps you might have a question on, so I'll let Lisa explain it.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lisa Voison from Robert W. Baird. We're based right out of Milwaukee. And normally, nobody cares about my background, and I usually don't talk about my background, but I did graduate from Wauwatosa West, so it was very exciting to come here tonight. I went to elementary school here, and when I pulled in the parking lot, everything has changed. I'm looking for my teacher's classes, nothing's the same. That was many years ago. So anyway, it was, it's been a long time. But I'm here to talk about cash defeasance, and a lot of times you think about paying off debt. If you pay off your mortgage, you have typically funds available, and you just go to the bank and you pay your mortgage off. That's similar to what we're doing here, but the reason why it's called a defeasance is because we can't pay it off right away. There's a call date or a prepayment date that you established on this loan when you borrowed it back in 2006. So the prepayment date is in 2016, and that's when you can actually go and pay off the loan. But today, what you can do is a defeasance, which means taking district funds, putting it into an escrow account at a bank, and the escrow account at the bank pays on the debt until that 2016 prepayment date. So the escrow account actually, or the bank, pays the debt off on the prepayment date in 2016. And the nice thing about a cash defeasance, I think it's a great fiscal decision from a School Board standpoint, is that once the funds, the district funds are transferred to the bank, in this case, on February 1st, all of that debt will be off your books. You will no longer have half-debt for this issue. The bank takes on that responsibility. So again, the reason why it's called a defeasance is you can't really pay it off right away. You have to put the funds into a bank. But the good thing is, once you transfer those funds over, it's no longer the district's debt. So what are the advantages to you by doing this cash defeasance? First of all, there's no impact on your state aid. We're able to do this transaction without having any increase or decrease in your state aid, which is a great situation that you're in. And what it does is it frees up funds under your revenue limit, because this is debt that you're being -- it's being paid from your revenue limit dollars. It frees up funds, about $300,000 a year, that you would have allocated to the debt payment. And you no longer have a debt payment, so it frees up that for the next, well, 10 years that you would have paid on that debt. So it's essentially paying off your debt and freeing up about $300,000 from your budget. After the cash is dispersed to the escrow agent, your savings to the district ends up to be about $240,000 over that 10-year period. So it's not only freeing up budget funds, but it's saving money for the district because you're not paying interest costs. As far as the timing, and I'm just kind of going off this bullet point, I think it's in your Board packet, but as far as the timing, we're looking at actually approving the defeasance by a formal resolution on the 24th, which I believe is your next Board meeting date. So the bond attorney will draft a formal resolution that'll allow you to do this defeasance, and then we will lock in investments on that day that the escrow agent, the bank, will handle or hold, so we'll lock everything in on that day. And then on February 1st, the funds transfer. So you can technically say by February 1st, if you move forward with the defeasance, by February 1st, you will no longer have that debt on your books. Does that make sense? Did I miss anything?
Nope.
Is there any questions regarding this?
Could you just review, Mr. Mack, that the debt, I believe, was our long-term liability?
Meanwhile, we did the debt in the first place.
Yeah, the debt is -- was part of the--
That had to do with paying off -- we actually used the money for buildings and grounds maintenance projects, and we took the cash and paid off--
Your prior service liability. So you owed money to the Wisconsin retirement system, and if you would have borrowed for that--
Right, that's what I was getting at. It was the unfunded pension liability.
In so many words, yes.
You were a little bit short on cash at the time.
Right, right, okay.
What other questions concerning -- is there a motion, or is it just for informational purposes?
The motion will be going to--
Yeah, tonight it's just for informational purposes.
Okay.
Board members, are there any other questions? Okay. Is there any community comment with respect to the business services presentation? Okay, we will then look for a action item on this issue at the next meeting?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Next, we move on to our student learning report, addressing elementary world languages, library media proposal, and mobile learning devices for students. Dr. Erdl.
The report tonight, Jamie Price is going to be starting, and actually, it lists this as two reports, but it's actually one report. So we also have Dan Chanan, Director of HR, Beth Aronberger, Director of Student Learning, and some other people will be joining them as well, so Mr. Price.
Is there a lot of people outside in the hall? Are there any where people can sit in the front?
Yeah.
You know, there's rooms in the front, like on the floor. Somebody's looking for chairs.
There's a chair.
Huh? Are you moving out one way? You know what, when we get ready, we can sit down.
There is a little bit of room in the front. If people want to come in, they can certainly sit on the floor, but they'll probably have to stay low because of the screen being in that area.
John?
Yes.
We don't need it because I loaded it.
That's true. We could get people along this wall as well.
We've got an extra chair. We have an extra chair.
Anne's chair.
Anne's going to be here shortly.
Oh, yeah. Wouldn't be good.
If you want food in the room.
You're probably going to be better off if you take your chairs all the way over along that wall, and then you can see the screen, and you won't block it at the same time.
You could sit over here, that would be fine, just so you have a good view of the screen.
How about these?
Few more?
Do you want to see one more?
There are, there's a chair here, and there's maybe, what, four or five chairs in the front row over here?
Actually, the speakers.
Okay, all right. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Price.
We're good? Okay, I'm here to introduce to the Board and audience the concept of mobility and specifically, mobility with technology, and a concept called the cloud. I'm going to start with a bit of flashback. The slides I've taken from a slideshow that I put together probably three years ago, I believe, when we initially brought the proposal for fiber to the Board and the increase, the one-time allocation of funds so that we could introduce switching and consolidation into the network. We did propose the STACK, what we called the STACK, the Support of Technology for Assessment, Curriculum, and Knowledge. If you remember, it was a proposal to upgrade the infrastructure of the district to enable us to become more flexible and fluid in the things that we needed and wanted to do. Back then, we had a pretty awful network. That's been achieved. With the STACK in place, we could do things like local collaboration. That has been achieved. We have those capabilities quite easily now, and we do have quite a number of bodies within the district that are utilizing the network to collaborate in ways that they have never done in the past. We can also execute global collaboration, meaning that from classrooms or with teacher content groups, teacher groups, et cetera, we can collaborate with bodies outside of the district, national, regional, national, or even on a global basis. We have achieved that, and that is occurring. Alternative access was also a proposal that, or also an item that we said we could achieve with the STACK, and that is also there. We can get to the network in varying different ways. We also predicted an increase and change in access on the network. We've achieved that. Last year, we introduced another 300 access points into the network so that every elementary school had, in addition to its library, a mobile access point cart so that they could access the network and internet, or network resources and internet. Some of the predictions that were made three years ago was that we were going to see less computers or demand for fewer computers, but more access points, what traditionally you know as computers. We would see centralization, virtualization, blade computing, mobile device connectivity, building wireless access. We have achieved all of those with the exception of blade computing, which we found to be not fiscally the best option for us to do. And this was a layout or a roadmap that I put down about three years ago, just to look at where we were, where we were going to go over three years. In 2008-09, we implemented fiber. We began investigation into PCs or blade PCs and virtualization. As I mentioned before, we didn't do the blade PCs. We found they were too expensive or not fiscally wise. We did, however, enter the virtualization field. About 95% of our infrastructure is virtualized. We also have a lot of desktops that are virtualized now as well. We're now in the 2010-2011 point, where we're looking at, again, increased access and investigating mobile access deployment, and that is what I'm bringing to the table today. So evolution, the playing field has changed since we talked about this three years ago. Initially, we brought the concept of the STACK into the picture, and we talked about being able to collaborate, being able to do more. That has come into effect, however, it's still just within the district itself. We do have a lot of services that are on the internet. For example, our virtual learning environment is hosted by third parties, so that's outside. Thanks to the infrastructure that we've got, it's not a problem to utilize that now. We, for example, online videos, et cetera, are hosted at other sites, for example, YouTube. We don't have a problem with getting to those now, thanks to the STACK that we introduced. But there is also this concept called the cloud that has really come to fruition over the last 12 months. It's been around for a little while, but it's basically called software as a service. As I mentioned, we have things like virtual learning, which are hosted by third parties outside of the district. What the cloud does is takes that concept even further and takes everything that we're used to doing locally and is hosted by third parties outside of the district or in the cloud. So for example, if we come into school or come into work on a daily basis, we log into the network, we access our files, we access our email, et cetera, and all of that is local. What the cloud does is basically picks all of that stuff up and takes it and puts it somewhere else. The benefit for that is that you can then access it from anywhere and have the same information and the same access to your data, to your files, et cetera, and the same interface from anywhere, from whether it's within the district, outside of the district, on the other side of the world, et cetera. That introduces the concept of boundary elimination. I've got to give kudos to Mr. Chanan here. This is his slide, and I'm just going to refer back to his presentation, but we got switched around. When we look at our student base, we really need to focus on that and look at the elimination of boundaries for their sake. There's so much information out there now that, you know, they need to be able to access information, the classroom, their libraries, the community, the world, without having to worry about the limitations. Or is it different if I do it from here, or if I do it from home, or if I'm an exchange student overseas or somewhere else? Can I still access that information? Can I still get to what I need to do? And with boundary elimination, yes, they can. Now, this concept of the cloud, how does it affect education? I came across this statement quite a while ago when I was looking at the value and the concept of mobile device connectivity within districts. And I'll read that off. To them, meaning students of today, Google has always been a verb, and text messaging is their email. And to me, that's pretty profound. Probably to everybody in this room, you know, Google, we all know that Google was, or most of us probably know that Google was introduced into the dictionary as a verb, but in our minds, Google is still a search engine, it's still a website that we go to to utilize a search engine. But if you look at the children of today, them, to Google something is to search for something, and there just happens to be a website called Google. Text messaging is their email. I looked at my own kids, and they don't email. They email-- They email their grandparents, and that's it. Or, and sadly, the only other people that they email are their teachers. Everybody else, they message. They message me. They message everybody else. They're using social networking to message. I mean, if you really think about that concept and you think, look, look at the kids today. Look at students today. Look at how they act. Look at what they're doing and what they're using and how fast they're moving. I mean, we're talking about, potentially, the students that we have in the district today, by the time they graduate, would, would never need to write a check, let alone actually go in somewhere to pay a bill. They potentially would never have rented or would rent a DVD, whether that's through a service like Netflix or actually, let alone going into the store to get a DVD. An encyclopedia would be a thing of the past. They would probably never, ever have the need to write a letter. Their letter would be email. There are many, many concepts like that that, for us as adults and probably anyone over the age of, say, 21, 23 years old, we can recognize it, but culturally, it is significantly different. I mean, we're talking about children that are not used to having to wait for answers. They can get answers very quickly. They know how to get the answers. And so, from an education perspective, learning is difficult enough as it is. And to be working with a culture that's as diverse from our own, we either need to change them or change what we do in order to help them learn, which brings, of course, the concept of diversified instruction or learning. What we need to do is provide the students with the avenues that they know and want in order to better enable them to learn, process, and interact. We need to allow our staff to develop teaching materials and styles that can allow them to be more effective with such a diverse student base. And we need to prepare students for the environment that they will be confronted with beyond high school. As I talked about that, as I brought in that concept of the cloud, things like that are not driven by education. There's not a lot of profit in education. The cloud concept, software as a service, they're usually driven by businesses and people, or companies that actually make money. Okay? So, they're out there. They're driven. And obviously, because they're there, because the cloud is such a big thing now, obviously, businesses are using it. They're moving to it. Colleges definitely are. So, if we start to adopt that same mentality and that same culture and concept here, we are effectively helping our students as they get beyond high school, whether they choose to continue with their education, enter the workforce, whatever. We're preparing them for that. So, what does the cloud bring? Accessibility, flexibility to access to information. Brings a reduced burden on your own services and network, and also potential cost savings. Moving forward, so if we want to look at the cloud, if we want to look at the students, if we want to, if we want to work with our students and help them learn in the most effective way, how are we going to do that? What needs to happen? We're not gonna make any PC purchases this year. We're actually going to redistribute the current units for optimal use. So, what I mean by that is, we're not going to reduce the amount of computers that are on the network, but we're not going to buy any either. We're going to take some of the newer PCs and reallocate them to the places that need them. And the older PCs, we're gonna leave in place or shift around to the places where they're more suited. Is anybody gonna suffer for that? No. Because we, as an organization, are also moving towards the cloud. We're moving a lot of our services out of the network to the cloud, which in turn reduces the burden, processing memory burden on the local computers. So, we don't really need those higher-end PCs as long as we follow through with a move to the cloud. Once we've done that, the funds that we would have used to purchase PCs this year, we will redirect to the acquisition of mobile devices, moving the majority of services to the cloud. And then we will deploy a limited amount of mobile devices and assess for future years. We're going to move, you know, when I came to the board with the tech plan and even prior to that, I've always been reiterating the concept of getting away from calling things computers and getting more around the term of access points. Really, all we're doing here is just increasing the amount of access points, which is what we've always wanted to do. These, however, will be put into the hands of students. We'll continue with a mixed PC and mobile device deployment strategy with a view to maximizing mobile devices over a number of years. So, as some of the older PCs fail, we'll assess them. We'll talk to the users. Do they want a mobile device? Do they want a fixed PC? In a lot of cases, a mobile device will be more than sufficient. Right now, the market is, is actually pretty strong. The Consumer Electronics Show occurred last week. For those who don't know, that's where all the geeks gather and all the electronics items and gadgets and things are brought in for display. There are over 100 new models of tablet devices, which is huge. The tablets are, I'm gonna touch on them in a bit, but, you know, they're, they're really, I wouldn't say they're gonna replace PCs, but as a lot of things are moved towards cloud-based services, they're gonna become more than sufficient for a lot of people to achieve what they need to achieve, and they're going to enhance their mobility and give them greater access to what they want to get to than what a fixed PC or even a laptop would do. So, as old, low-use PCs fail to replace with mobile device or virtualization, whichever is appropriate, I do wanna put a caveat in there that we will always look at providing new PCs when necessary. So, we do have a couple of high-use areas, business ed labs, Project Lead the Way, for example. We wouldn't ignore those. What we're talking about here is just the average user that wants to use group email and write Word documents and get to the web. They don't necessarily need a PC anymore to do that. A mobile device could be sufficient. As the technology burden reduces, we would then focus our efforts on teacher development, support, and integration. So, obviously, as we move services to the cloud, the technology department is not going to be maintaining as many systems internally. There'll still be systems administration that needs to be performed, but a lot of the day-to-day maintenance operations would be offloaded to other sites or to other, to other parties. As a result, there will be a reduction in the amount of technical intervention that needs to occur. Not massive, but I predict about maybe a 10% to 15% reduction. And that could then be redirected towards supporting the additional mobile devices, helping teachers develop with them, grow with them, et cetera, which is very much so aligned with the Information Technology and Literacy Plan, Information Technology Literacy Plan that was approved by the board last June. And then, if possible, we would extend wireless access for mobile devices beyond the boundaries of district buildings. What I mean by this is that, that if possible, we'd like to be able to give people internet access on these mobile devices from home as well. There's a federal reimbursement program out called E-Rate that currently focuses on internet access for districts and interbuilding communication. So, we receive E-Rate reimbursements for our fiber connectivity between buildings, and we receive E-Rate reimbursement for our internet connection. About a year ago, well, probably prior to that, it was recognized that pretty much every school now has internet. They have good connectivity between their buildings. And the powers that be decided to expand the E-Rate program, and they are investigating funding, or at least partial funding, for home-based internet connectivity for district use. They are piloting that with a $10 million pilot program this year. That would be, for example, if I have an iPad or a tablet, let's say a Samsung Galaxy that's tied to Sprint, there would be like a 3G contract or something like that that would come with it. E-Rate, I don't know what they're gonna do. No one knows what they're gonna do, but E-Rate is looking at providing reimbursement to districts in order to accommodate that because they also recognize that this elimination of boundaries, that enabling students to get to the information that they want to get to from anywhere, not just from within the district buildings, is very, very important. So, what has been done so far to get us to that point? We've conducted research. We've identified the best conceptual devices to use. We would use a tablet for everyday use, for day-to-day student use. So, potentially, we would see a student carrying a tablet around that they could use to access the network, access their resources, their virtual learning systems, their textbooks, you know, whatever we, whatever, whatever is loaded onto there that's possible at the time. And then also, e-readers for the Library Media Center use. There's been a significant growth in e-reader use. Couple of our high schools are piloting at the moment with, with e-readers in their, in their libraries. The Wisconsin DPI has recognized the growth of e-readers and how that, how that it needs to be addressed. So, they have a summit occurring very soon related to that. The process of identifying classes and content areas that will integrate mobile devices have been initiated. So, I've sat down with some principals and discussed the same. Ms. Ehrenberger has put some work into identifying content areas, classes, identifying teachers that will integrate these devices into the curriculum. And we'll all be working very closely, very soon, with those principals to finalize those classes, whether that be across an entire grade area, whether a content area or an individual class. I would not yet comment, but we've initiated that. We've, we've formed a limited distribution of tablets to teachers and administrators for assessment. We've also implemented a limited distribution of wireless access. So, all the buildings, all the libraries and all the buildings have wireless, all the main office areas, in the secondary schools, cafeterias, the, the learning centers, et cetera, have wireless. We're not gonna do it across the board. We're gonna identify where we need it first, and we'll implement it on demand. We've initiated the move to the cloud, and we've implemented mobile device access to virtual learning environments. Whoops. What still needs to be done? Pretty soon after this meeting, as I mentioned before, Ms. Ehrenberger, myself, and, and some principals will be sitting down to identify those content areas or classes that would best benefit and that are passionate about integrating mobile devices into their, into their areas. I'll be gathering those educators together as a team or a committee or whatever you'd like to call it, and we will be assessing tablet products. Right now, we're looking at the iPad because really, that's, that's the market leader at the moment. But like I said, 100 units, different types of models are introduced at the CES this past week. So, there's a lot out there. We're not, we're looking at the iPads just as tablets, not specifically getting tied to iPads themselves. It'll be the educators that determine which ones, which one is the best to use. We'll select the device. Those educators will then work in, on integrating those devices fully into their curriculum. So, whether that's, that can be done during the workday, it'll be funded. The curriculum writing will be funded, and we'll, we'll move forward with that. We'll also look at the textbook cycle. And where appropriate and possible, we will acquire digital content or versions. I do have a couple of slides related to textbook and print reduction coming up very soon. It's a very important point of this, but I think it's also important to point out that we are not approaching mobile device integration from a print reduction standpoint. You, sometimes you hear districts that say, well, we're gonna, we're just gonna, in one year, everybody's gonna get a mobile device, and we're gonna get rid of, rid of textbooks. We're not taking that approach. We're approaching it from the education side, and I'll talk about print reduction in a few slides. And then, we will purchase and deploy the initial round of mobile devices. At this point in time, we're looking at about 1,000. So, for the secondary schools, maybe a couple hundred each, and then we could do, do some at the elementary schools as well. Again, yet to be determined. And then we will monitor, assess, and plan for future years. So, that cycle that I presented three years ago or so is still in place. It's just that the concept of access is changing from computers to a mixed bag of mobile devices and computers. And we're gonna just try, within our budgetary constraints, to meet the need, or we will meet the need. Benefits and strategy alignment. Why are we doing this? I've got a slide here that indicates the three strategies for the new long-range plan. The first one, uh-oh, what happened there? No!
It was there a minute ago.
You know, that's the first time I've used a Mac to present. Oh, it's totally lost it. Look at that.
It's raining in the cloud.
All right. Back to where we were. Okay, maximizing relationships and partnerships amongst and between members of the educational community as well as the greater community. How do mobile devices tie into that? Obviously, we give greater ability for, to, to achieve district, regional, national, global collaboration, anytime access, real-time access from anywhere. Transforming the learning environment in order to ensure success, sorry, to ensure access to curriculum and personalized learning for all students. I mean, this is really what mobile devices are about. It's like this strategy from the new long-range plan was written in order to accommodate the acquisition of mobile devices almost. How do we achieve that? Virtual learning, adaptability, e-texts and ebooks that I mentioned before, and I've got a slide on it in a bit. Instant updates. So, for example, if you are a class that's focusing on current affairs and you have a textbook that's tied to that digitally, you can receive the updates to that textbook as they happen, or any addendums as they happen. Right now, in a lot of cases, you may have a hard-print textbook, and an addendum comes out, and you have to go to the website to read the addendum, or a teacher prints off the addendum, et cetera. Survey, analysis, and reaction can be performed, and again, anytime, real-time, anywhere. Data-driven decision-making is the third strategy in the long-range plan to creating clear performance expectations for student, staff, and key stakeholders. Again, with mobility, we've got enhanced communication, anytime, real-time, anywhere access for the students, and we can also utilize them to greater degrees to survey, analyze, and react to the learning environment in real-time. So, as promised, I have a couple of slides at the end to talk about the reduction of print. What are the pros? Well, mobile devices offer opportunities for print, print reduction, a potential for significant cost savings. Potentially, the district's gonna do some large textbook purchases over the next few years. Ms. Ehrenberger will be the one that works with content teams and departments to determine that. But the tentative draft schedule indicates that there, there is the potential for some large purchases. If we do that and we have mobile devices in place or e-readers in place, we do have the opportunity to, to realize some significant cost savings by moving to digital. Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that we need to, to replace all books with digital versions. We're really just talking about textbooks here. So, in researching these options, the, the cost savings for districts that have done that have ranged from, I'd say, 25% to 60%. One of the most dramatic I read was a district that was about to drop $150,000 on textbooks and did it from a digital perspective, and they only ended up paying $50,000. So, the benefits are there, fiscally. Again, or as well, it's also a massive reduction in physical burden for students. So, if you carry a tablet, Mr. Chanen, would you mind holding up? A tablet? A tablet, a student could potentially hold, or would be able to hold, all of their textbooks on that device, uh, plus everything else that they might need to do, um, rather than carry around six, or seven, or eight, or twelve, or however many large textbooks in a, in a backpack. Immediate updates, we touched on. And then there's also no loss of textbook replacement or repairs needed. Uh, so dog ears, ripped pages, book bindings, all that sort of stuff. Do, do you have, I was about to touch on that. Do you have the problem with, uh, the device itself? Well, yeah, but, you know what? If you're providing them for educational purposes, then you've got that problem to begin with anyway. Adding textbooks in on top of an educational purpose, just, there is no, no risk. I do have a quick demonstration video here that I put together just to demonstrate an electronic textbook, which I guess isn't gonna happen. Hang on. Here we go. All right. This is on the iPad, and I do wanna point out that we're not, iPads are what we're assessing at the moment, but we're really looking at the concept of the tablet. We're not all hung up on the iPad. What I've got up here on the screen is just a textbook, just to give you a visual representation of, of what you can do with a digital textbook. So you see, it pretty much looks the same. Ah, did it again, sorry. There we go. You can flick through the pages. If you find a word, the student can tap on the word and immediately pull up a dictionary reference to that, to that word. They can tap on a word and highlight it. You see, it's highlighted yellow there. The highlighting is easy to remove. They can tap on the word and remove it. They can also highlight sentences and paragraphs. They can also take notes on a book, uh, just by doing it, tapping the word and then typing in their notes, pull up a little sticky note. The important thing here is that this is, these concepts are things that are, uh, there's also removing the note, which is pretty easy. Uh, the important thing here is that, you know, these, what this demonstration is for the iPad, but these, these concepts and these, these tools are pretty much available in most e-readers, uh, whether it be a Kindle, or a Nook, or, or one of the Sony devices. That instant dictionary lookup, uh, the highlighting, the note-taking, uh, they're there. They're there in e-readers. It's a technology that's pretty standard. So imagine a student carrying around a tablet device that has all their textbooks on it. They could take as many notes as they want. They're not gonna damage the book. And then when they're done, they can erase it or, or set it back to, to where it was before. However, there are cons with reducing print. Uh, the conversion to digital is stymied by publisher resistance at the moment. I'm gonna add to that, the current investment must be realized, that's twofold. So, uh, the, the textbook publishers out there, some of them are resisting the conversion to digital. I can understand it, they don't wanna lose their, their, their investment. Their investment is in printing presses and whatever technologies and equipment they use to print. It's like, uh, super tankers, you know? It takes X number of years to actually start realizing a profit on that equipment. So we're sort of in a bit of a bind at the moment where, where some companies are, are adopting it and, and they're offering digital subscriptions or digital purchases to their textbooks. You've got others that are some pretty big players that are resisting at the moment. Over a number of years, that resistance, you know, if, if I was a bookseller or producer right now, I would be focusing a lot of R and D time on digital, digital, uh, versions. And also, our current investment must be realized, right? I mean, we've bought textbooks and we've bought some pretty recently, so we don't wanna throw them out. We wanna make sure that we've used them, and it's only through natural attrition, once the textbooks are, need to be replaced, that we should really look at replacing them from a, from a digital perspective. The market's still developing. I mentioned the, the amount of devices that were with CES last week. Uh, you know, it's still young. So ultimately, immediate broad adoption based solely on print reduction goals is not fiscally sound. And I, I do wanna add here that I've heard some comments and I've seen some comments about the digitization, uh, of the classroom, and that's not what this is about. This is about providing tools from an education perspective to our students so that they can learn in the manner that they want and need to learn. The whole thing of our print reduction, the digitization of print is just a secondary side benefit that, yes, over a number of years, are we gonna take advantage of that? Absolutely. We'd be foolish not to. But we're not, and I've never been a proponent of one-to-one, blindly saying one-to-one computing. We are not just saying, "Okay, we're gonna bring in mobile devices and replace all the textbooks." We will just, uh, take advantage of that as it happens. So, with that being said, I will now hand it over to Ms. Zarenberger.
Yeah. And then it's Lena, you wanna come over? Yeah, but, hold on. Um, I have a, um, couple, um, individuals with me this evening to, um, participate in the world language presentation. I have, um, Dr. Helena Curtin here. She has been our world language consultant as we went through the, um, world language review last year. And, um, I also have Eva Tunstra, who is the world language content team leader. That has also played a key role in, um, facilitating the world language long-range plan committee and, um, looked at, uh, world languages for a significant amount of time for us in the district. So I'm gonna begin by, um, we have been to the board before several times, um, reporting on world languages, um, especially had some conversations about the elementary world language, um, the desire for that in our district. Um, the current proposal is that the Wauwatosa School District adopt an elementary Spanish world language program for all students in grades one through five at all nine elementary schools beginning the two thousand eleven, twelve school year. This Spanish program would teach designated content-related benchmarks with social studies benchmark concentration in the Spanish language to facilitate student acquisition of a second language at an early age. Why are we proposing the elementary world language program? Just to give you a little bit of the historical perspective is that this comes out of the, of two thousand five, two thousand six long-range plan. It was action step thirteen. As a result of that long-range plan, Eva Tunstra, uh, took, um, facilitation of that committee and worked for, um, several years on some recommendations to bring forward and reported to the board on, at least two occasions, on the progress of that committee work. These are some slides from the two thousand, two thousand seven presentation, um, given by that committee to the Board of Education. At that time, they identified, this particular committee identified three goals for the world language program in the Wauwatosa School District. One of those is to update teaching resources, and at that time, they were speaking to, um, present world language program, um, that was at the secondary level. To implement a sixth-grade program that was similar to what had been offered in the district in the past. There was an exploratory program at one time. And then also, to implement a K through twelve world language program. The committee at that time also had, um, given the advice that, uh, to start the language as early as possible and that, um, the research supported, it didn't matter what language it was, but that it was important to study early. They also came forward in that, in that same presentation, talking about a pilot program, um, using a village concept, possibly looking at some beginning costs of what it would take to implement a world language program, uh, if we were to even pilot that. Following that committee work, we began a world language review. Our secondary curriculum hadn't been reviewed for about fifteen years. Our resources were very dated. Dr. Curtin came on to work with us and, um, after doing extensive audits, gave a very large report that we presented to the board last spring. And you didn't meet Dr. Curtin at that time, she was out of the country, but she did do a little video introduction of herself. But these are ten of the things that she brought forward in looking at our world language program, and one of those was to, to extend the foreign language to earlier grades in the middle school and the elementary school, along with several other things that, um, have been, um, implemented and worked on, um, the past school year and this school year. Other things that the committee looked at, research and grant opportunities to see what was out there, to be able to support an introduction of an elementary program. Uh, they also looked at several model programs. The committee did some extensive research in this area. We also sensed the committee work had an opportunity. We had a German teacher that we had appoint to FTE over at East High School, so we were able to bring them over to Lincoln, um, to do a pilot. And since then, we've also had an opportunity for some individuals to visit, um, a Wanakee, the Wanakee School District, which very recently implemented a, uh, elementary program. I'm gonna have Dr. Curtin just go through the rationale. I've asked her to, um, I mean, she's very thorough, but I've asked her to be brief and thorough. Um, she is, um, she is an international world language consultant. We have been fortunate that she's been working in the Milwaukee area, um, a lot, for thirty-plus years, she's had her expertise both in the United States, internationally. We're just fortunate that she is in this area to, um, every now and then stop in and help us out. She, um, was the founder of both of the immersion schools in the Milwaukee Public School District and about nineteen other, um, uh, programs that have been implemented as well in this area. So I'm gonna let her give a brief introduction, uh, or a brief reminder of our rationale as to why we thought this was an important thing to do. So I'm gonna ask Helena to.
Thank you. On? I'm pleased to talk about my favorite topic, uh, which is, uh, early language learning and, uh, changing the world one, uh, child at a time. On? Are we on?
No, it's under the phone.
It's good now?
Now you turn it on.
Okay. And, uh, is this where?
It's fine.
Yep, you're ready to go.
Okay. Um, I think the important thing is, there's so much research on what bilingualism can do and the idea of the gift of bilingualism for students in Wauwatosa, extremely important because, um, we can't achieve it with two years or three or four years at the high school, or even beginning at the middle school. Millions of kids around the world go to school in another language and we're remiss in the United States in not having those opportunities. I always joke about, uh, English-speaking countries and the fact that God spoke English. Um, that, um, that idea that we, uh, English speakers are able to, um, manage ourselves around the world because so many other people do speak English. Multilingualism is a normal experience in the rest of the world. One-third of the world's kids learn in only one language. Two-thirds of the world's kids learn in more than one language. And we find it unusual that little kids are learning languages, but of course, think about Africa, think about Asia, think about India, where kids go to school and their tribal language, or their dialect, or their home language is not the language that they're going to school in. And so they are very young with the advantages that bilingualism brings. For example, in Europe now, our European colleagues, who of course, um, have excellent language skills, in two thousand one was the European Year of Languages and, um, the European community, uh, recommended that every European have three languages at a minimum. Their native language, um, their neighboring language, and probably English as the largest world language. So, uh, this is happening in Europe. Most European countries now start language at kindergarten, or at the very latest at grade three. And, uh, I've seen this over the last ten or fifteen years develop to a point where Europeans are offering language at the elementary school. It used to be that they started languages in grade five, which was the beginning of the secondary school, but now they are all starting language at the elementary school level. They're worried that they're not gonna be able to communicate with each other. Ah, so, how many Americans are proficient in a second language? Well, nine percent of us, fifteen, fifty-three percent of Europeans proficient in a second language. In the USA, we have thirty-two percent of our secondary students learning another language and eighteen percent, only eighteen percent of all of our students, K through twelve, learning another language. Wisconsin, uh, we're doing a little better. Fifty-three percent of Wisconsin students at the secondary level learn another language. And Wauwatosa's doing even better than that in terms of the numbers of secondary students learning another language. So you see, there's definitely a need, and if Wauwatosa would begin a program like this, would put you definitely in the forefront, but along with global initiatives. What are the languages? Well, there's been, um, great changes, uh, in language teaching in that Spanish has become our most popular language, uh, followed by, uh, French and then German a little bit further down. Less commonly taught languages such as Chinese, especially Chinese, are growing. Um, but we're not going to focus on which language it is, but just wanted you to see that there is information available on what is happening. I wanted to focus on why should students learn another language? And, uh, well, the first reason is that, uh, even though English is one of the biggest world languages, not everyone speaks English. And, uh, the story that I tell all the time is an old one from about twenty years ago about the Japanese businessman who was asked, um, and the American businessman who was asked, "What's the most important language for business?" And the American businessman said, "English." And the Japanese businessman said, "My clients." And, um, this is the, the important point of, of, of offering language and starting language early. And, uh, communication in another language is basic education. In the United States, we're unusual because we have four basic academic subjects. In the rest of the world, there are five. Uh, and languages is part of the academic core content in the rest of the world. Continuing with, why should students learn another language? Obviously, it provides the time that's needed for fluency. One of the reasons our European colleagues do so well is because they start early, they keep on going all the way through. They start their second foreign language in middle school, they keep on going all the way through. And, um, many of them, depending on the high school they go to, they might be starting a third foreign language and continue that all the way through. So, uh, of course, in order to develop skills and in order to be as fluent as a native speaker of that language, you need thousands of hours to learn that language. So why should students learn another language? Obviously, cognitive and academic benefits, higher scores on verbal intelligence measures. There are many, many studies that show that there's a correlation between, uh, language learning and, um, SAT scores, for example, and so on. Because once you have another language, your brain has two systems. Your brain has two ways of looking at the world. And, um, the, I could talk for hours about what are the benefits, but the idea is just simple, that your brain then has more avenues. The dendrites get pushed out, uh, in, in other ways, in many ways. So one of the, the big things that we deal with when we're talking about, um, learning another language is the fear that, uh, if you add another language early, something's gonna happen to the native language. And, um, that fear is absolutely unfounded because the opposite is true. It seems like a paradox, but as you add another language, it adds to your native language because your brain has become more flexible. So that as one language increases, the other one doesn't decrease, they both increase. And there's research to support this. Greater metalinguistic awareness. So if you're learning, if you're learning another language, you are much better in your native language. There was an interesting study, uh, recently at Northwestern University, and there were three groups of native English speakers, and they were asked to learn words in an invented language. Uh, there were English and Mandarin bilinguals in one group, English-Spanish bilinguals in another group, and monolinguals in the third group. And the results were that the bilinguals were able to remember twice as many words as the monolinguals, again, because their brain had already developed that facility. Mental flexibility, creativity, divergent thinking, um, again, cognitive development, much better, uh, for kids who learn a language at an earlier age than for kids who don't learn another language. Higher academic achievement on standardized tests, which I mentioned, and let me just talk about the Louisiana study, uh, which is a program similar to the one that is being proposed here. Thirteen thousand students, uh, were in the study. Half studied a foreign language, and in this case, it was French. Half didn't. They had thirty minutes a day, grades one through five. Uh, the students were tested in their first language with, with a basic standardized test in grades three, four, and five. And, uh, the impact was looked at in terms of age, race, gender, and academic level. And the results were that the kids who studied the foreign language did better on all sections of the Louisiana Basic Skills Language Arts Test. And the results were the same for all the groups. All the groups, age, uh, race, gender, and academic level did not make a difference. And this is typical, typical information on learning another language. So many benefits for learning a language. This is from, uh, this list is from Colin Baker, who's one of the leading authorities on bilingual education. What are some of the improvements? Classification- Classification, concept formation, analogical reasoning, visual spatial skills, creativity, cognitive flexibility. I Googled advantages of bilingualism yesterday, and there were pages and pages of research studies that are there. Ah, well, another reason that students should learn another language, attitudinal benefits. The kids are more accepting of differences, they have a global attitude, and they have this understanding of culture. And if I'm showing this picture of the iceberg, you know, the, the top of the iceberg is what we see, but as you develop another language, you begin to understand the perspectives and of why people act the way that they do. And the only way that we'll be able to have effective cross-cultural communication is if we do understand the cultures of the languages that we're studying. And the other interesting thing is that when you're learning about a new culture, it actually affects the appreciation for your own home culture. It doesn't take away from it. I left this one for almost last, but of course, the economic and career benefits related to learning another language, extremely important. And four out of five jobs in the US are created as a result of foreign trade. And Americans lose out on jobs with business because they don't know another language. And I think we're very familiar with that. And of course, personal benefits. I can get to know people. I can get to understand realities that I might not understand if I were not able to communicate in another language. Now, when kids start early, they have what we call the ease and naturalness factor. As they start a little bit later, their fear factor comes in. Oh, this language sounds strange, this language sounds weird. And as we start later, we, we begin to worry about, oh, I have to be correct, I have to be perfect in the way that I use this language. But when children learn language early, they realize that they're able to do it, and they have this sense of efficacy that's extremely important. So, I have a series of questions to end my presentation. Who, which, when, what, and how? So, you'll of course know the answers before I even show them to you. Who should learn another language? All children. And we've come away from this idea that language learning is only for college-bound students. We know that this is a gift, it's a social gift, it's not an academic gift. Which language should they learn? And here's the issue, any language, because those skills transfer to the next one. Mandarin has gotten to be extremely popular, and there are many school districts that are thinking about Mandarin. I'm just going to say upfront that when I work with school districts, I often recommend that they think twice about trying to do it at the elementary school, and maybe waiting for the next 10 years or so until high school. We don't yet have the infrastructure to provide quality Mandarin programs. And I'd be happy to talk more about that a little bit later. How many languages? Okay, the answer, as many as possible. And here they are, in terms of their rank. Be happy to leave this presentation with you. Mandarin number one, Hindi number two, 1 billion speakers of Mandarin, 420 million total speakers of Spanish, 510 total speakers of English, interesting. When? Obviously, as early as possible. I always love to put this picture in. Actually, I think they're listening to Mozart. But, I couldn't resist putting it in. But, of course, as early as possible. And what should the language programs look like? They need to be based on using the language and not simply talking about it. The idea being not talking about how the grammar of this language works, but actually using it. Not translating it, speaking the language, not 100% of the time, if at all possible. Remember, "The direction in which education starts a man will determine his future life."
From Plato.
And students who are competent in at least two languages will dramatically increase USA capabilities in diplomacy, in world trade, and in human understanding. And if we start early, we can give the kids that fluency that they need, and we can change the world, one child at a time.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to go on with our program description of what we're looking at. I think it's important to recognize that, what the benefits are of a world language program, given that we have, we're looking at some proposed sacrifices in order to make that happen. So, it's important that we know what the benefits of that program are. We are proposing the Spanish in grades one through five. The curriculum would, as we had mentioned before, would be content-related. It'd have social status concentration at the elementary level. The two individuals I have up here, Eva and Helena, are much more experts in knowing what is best for our program, but that it, the elementary program would focus on oral language, listening and speaking. You know, it's not that reading and writing would not be included, but it's very, not as appropriate at the elementary level as listening and speaking oral language portion. We would be proposing 60 minutes a week in grades one and two, 75 minutes a week in grades three and four, 90 minutes a week in grade five. And it would be a target language delivery model in Spanish. And I'm just going to ask Helena to take a minute and talk about exactly what that means. There's a lot of different words we can use here, but...
Basically, the idea that we'll be using the language to teach the language, and not be talking about the language through English. Many of us, in our past, may have been exposed to language learning, in which we, we learned the grammar of the language, but we didn't even, we didn't necessarily learn how to use the language. But, the language teacher, and I'm sure this is what Eva does as she teaches her German class, will be using the language and having the kids understanding what's going on, because he or she is speaking that language.
Just to take a minute, like the why the Spanish, it was a large discussion. It was an extremely large discussion among world language teachers as well. But, the research was very strong, that it was more that it was learned early than what was taught. So, there's like, a lot, a lot, an abundance of research supporting that what language was not as significant. But, some of the other things that we considered were that Spanish has an everyday presence in our, our culture, and our students have much more opportunity to be able to practice and use the language, much more frequent application. Spanish language is not as time-intensive to learn as a language such as Mandarin. Mandarin takes four times more, is four ti, takes four, four times more time to learn than a Spanish language. We also, with the quality instruction, we did research on the availability of quality teachers to be able to provide the program. We know that there's a significant candidate pool to be able to hire licensed elementary teachers with Spanish certification. That, that is not true for other languages. Even looking at French and German, which we presently teach, that pool is not as, is very, very small, if existent at all. There are some cost benefits to having the same language across the district, being able to do curriculum development, having teachers be able to collaborate and, and work on quality over quantity and division of the workload. And, you know, it also will help develop and promote our students' confidence and interest in other languages. What we have talked about is that while it might be the Spanish language that we're teaching, but we're really promoting our students at the elementary level to learn any language, and that Spanish is the place, the language that they would be starting with, but that we're not doing that at the exclusion of any other language. And to encourage our students, when they have the opportunity to learn another language, either to take another language, more than one language, or if at some point, be able to switch that language, and they will still be at a decided advantage, having had the early learning of language. The staff development that would be needed for this could be minimal. If we hire licensed teachers, we would expect them to come with the qualifications and skills to be able to provide the curriculum, and be able to have, instructionally, be quality instructors. We also would have them maximize the use of our collaboration time to be able to do job-embedded staff development, so we don't look at a lot of additional cost in that area. Program evaluation, there would be, this would be an area we would need to do some curriculum writing on. Dr. Curtin's working with our secondary staff on proficiency-based assessments. She has made it very clear that we need to know at each level, at each level of language, and elementary would be at each grade level, what the proficiency expectation would be at the end of a student participating in that language. At elementary, the focus, the students start at novice low, and that we would expect them to get to a novice high level. Certainly, as they progress in the language, we would expect them to get to the highest level, which...
Well, if they started at the elementary school, they could get to advanced low by the time they finished grade 12 at the high school.
Thank you. So, the budget, the overall budget we'd be looking at is, yes, we would need some curriculum writing. We would, sorry, that would be about $1,000 per teacher. Materials and resources, you know, again, about $1,000 per teacher, for things like manipulatives and props. We would want to continue to have Dr. Curtin work with us on the proficiency developments and benchmark identification. And then, the last point on this slide is the point that I think all of us have some interest in this evening, and that is that when we first looked at how we would staff a world language program, obviously, if we look at what it would cost to hire the teachers to cover that staffing, it would be at significant cost. It looked somewhere to be in the range of like a $500,000 commitment that would be ongoing to pay for salaries and benefits. So, knowing, having a clear understanding of that, it seemed that if we were going to be able to bring a proposal forward, we would need to look at how we could reallocate staff programs to be able to find a way to bring the staffing to the program that wouldn't be at an additional cost, in terms of monetary cost, and also not at any cost to the sacrifice of any program. So, I'm going to ask Mr. Chanon to now continue to talk about that a little further.
Excuse me. Last question. We're given the challenging goal to attempt to staff this vision for an elementary world language program, but keeping in mind that we really need to keep, have there be no real increase in overall teacher FTE, and to ensure that elementary teachers would maintain their preparation time. And just to explain that a little bit, one of the roles that our elementary library media specialists serve is that they provide pull-out instruction in the library, and that provides our elementary teachers with preparation time. And that's true for all of our specialists at the elementary level. And we also want to ensure that students receive their DPI-required number of minutes in each subject. Obviously, something that, when looking at what were possible pieces of the elementary school day that could be modified or manipulated, as obviously, we have certain limitations of things that couldn't be removed or changed. The staffing plan that we developed really took a look at the library minutes, and it focused in on that ultimately for a number of reasons. First of all, that there are no requirements from the Department of Public Instruction to provide that time. The minutes allocated to library time are really English, covered by our English Language Arts standards. So, that those learning objectives and technology objectives are really something that's already integrated into the common core. They're, in essence, a redundancy of language arts minutes. In order to equalize preparation time, we also structure our world language minutes so that it increases preparation time at the third and fourth grade level, and at the fifth grade level, where under our current staffing model, our secondary, our third and fourth grade teachers have unequal preparation time when you compare at different levels. So, we were able to implement this program and come up with a total FTE count for the district, where we would require 6.6 FTE of time to fully staff the Spanish Elementary World Language, and there are 8.3 elementary librarians. Obviously, their time goes beyond just the time that they spend servicing the students. So, the minutes that you see there are the minutes that they're responsible for designing and implementing instruction for students. The other time is spent supporting teachers, managing our libraries, providing resources to students. In order to compensate for that, when we reallocated, we have 6.6 of Spanish FTE, we added a full FTE for an elementary library coordinator position. This was, this will be proposed as a supervisory position outside of the union, working 229 days, and they will be responsible for the overall management of the nine elementary libraries. They'll be coordinating our information technology literacy standards, and providing resources to our teachers, and providing leadership on general information and technology solutions for students in terms of accessing resources, purchasing books, coaching teachers on integration of information and technology literacy standards into the curriculum, which are, again, standards that are already a part of the core requirements for our elementary teachers. Our initial proposal was that they would be supervising 3.0 full-time equivalents of library educational assistants, who would provide support over our nine elementary schools, basically giving each library support once every three days. And, you know, due to substantial amount of feedback that we've received from the community, we've realigned this proposal, and we'll certainly be coming back when it's for final approval, to have 4.5 FTE of library time, of aid time at each total for the district, which would basically be having someone in the building half-time, or its equivalent, at every school. And to point out that not every school currently now has a full-time librarian in it. So, for example, Underwood has a .5 staffing allocation for a library media specialist, and this plan would basically fully compensate that building, so...
Excuse me, please. For members of the audience, we need to be able to get through the program so we can get to the comment section of the evening. So, please, if you have comments, save them for the time for public comment. Thank you.
The coordinator will obviously be responsible for those are core responsibilities, which would be the use of common school funds at the elementary level, would be responsible in conjunction with the Information Services Department to integrate the mobile device initiatives. They'd be responsible for managing the library collections, centralizing our catalog in conjunction with Information Services, and then developing resources for elementary teachers for an information and technology literacy standards. Again, this person would have no direct teaching responsibilities, and so that, that's, which is right now a significant amount of what our library media specialists are also tasked with, their roles being divided. The library aides would be responsible for being present in each building and assisting in physical maintenance of collection, aid teachers and students in locating resources, training students and staff on checkout procedures, providing weekly time, weekly library time to senior kindergarten. You'll notice that senior kindergarten is not receiving Spanish language instruction, and currently, they do receive a half-hour a week of library time. That'd be something provided by the aides, as well as the junior kindergarten, which is, I believe, 20 minutes a month. They would also be present on a weekly, but under the new staffing plan, a daily basis to provide checkout assistance directly. And they would also be responsible for working directly with parent volunteers within the elementary libraries. In terms of job qualifications, this is an aid position, and like with all of our aid positions, the minimum standards for higher would be a two-year degree. Obviously, it's our intent to post with a preferred qualification for certification within a library and teacher certification. And the position is budgeted at the top end of a teacher-certified aide. So, our budget assumptions are based on if we hired someone at the top of the pay scale as a teacher-certified aide, and we would be seeking that. Based on the applicant pool, the potential applicant pool of librarians who are currently, this month, seeking employment, we believe that we would be able to staff those positions with certified librarians. The goal of this is really to, to shift the libraries, and we really do see this as a win. We're increasing the amount of staff... We're increasing the amount of staff who are present in the library, available, we're relieving them of instructional duties, but we're having someone in the library who is certified and qualified to provide assistance to our teachers and to our students in accessing those resources. In addition, we're appointing someone, a coordinator, who's really going to have the role of driving forward our vision to reshape that library media center to be a place and to be an access point to providing information. And as we integrate that technologies, kind of learned from the earlier presentation, the library is really just the one place that they're going to be able to go through those access points. It's really going to allow them to reach out and access information throughout the world, video conferencing, research, really reaching out to something beyond just the four walls of our school. And we see that's really going to transform our library. Over time, most likely through attrition, we'll see a reduction in print resources and an increase in digital resources, really probably primarily in the nonfiction materials, where there's a need for current and up-to-date information on a regular basis. We would anticipate that you'd see a strong use of print fiction materials, where you're trying to interest young readers in continuing to develop an interest in just reading itself. That would be mixed, however, with the additional mobile devices, which have an appeal of their own for children. We'd also be creating spaces for group and project-based learning, and as that space develops and we begin to access more mobile technology, we would probably move away from that traditional bank of computers where they're sitting rows facing forward, and create a more flexible learning environment, a place where there can be interactive presentation, space and resources, real-time networking with resources that we can pull in from around the world using our cloud capability, space for virtual exploration and field trips, hopefully, you know, larger presentation screens, that ability to kind of find and locate media resources that are real-time, to kind of take kids on virtual field trips, and begin to prepare students for ways in which they're going to be learning in the future. I know certainly, as long ago as 2002, virtual textbooks were kind of a part of certainly my graduate education as well. This is really designed, this whole move to meet goals within our long-range plan. There was a goal set forth six years ago to develop a junior kindergarten, a 12-world language instructional program. It falls short on the junior kindergarten and kindergarten level, but that's quite frankly, in part due to budgetary restraints. We need to be proposing a fiscally responsible plan that also meets our learning objectives. It also is consistent with the plan that the district will continue to develop a technology program that meets student, staff, and community needs. And I think Mr. Price's presentation went a long way in showing where that is we're intending to go, and the library media centers within our elementary schools need to start moving and migrating in that direction to become kind of the key access point for those technology and media resources. Teachers need to become the key keeper of helping integrate those into daily curriculum use. And they're also consistent with our 2010 long-range plan, where we're looking to create students who are going to be competitive in a global society, and I believe that world language is a key component to moving that forward. And, again, the focus of the technological integration is to make sure that we are creating that a learning environment, not necessarily for today, but where this district is going to be in five years, 10 years down the road, because this is not evolving any slower.
Just one, one other comment, I think, excuse me, is important to remember. This proposal going back for world language, back to 2005, 2006, and probably the first conversation I had with Eva when I got here, anytime we've discussed this proposal as we've gone forward, it was made very clear, I think probably the most recent time was the introductory staff meeting this year in August, when I made the point that we will bring forward a proposal to the school board for an elementary world language program, and very clearly prefaced that there is going to be difficult decisions that come along with this, this program. We can go back several different years, and very clearly knew this, this program didn't get off the ground because there's not money. We can go back to 1993, and we know school districts have been under revenue limits. There is no additional money to add this program. And I know most of the people in this room are here to speak against this because of the library media piece. I strongly believe in this proposal, and I strongly believe in what our library media centers can be, and what they can look like, even next year and well beyond. And I know that, that's hard, because we're talking about people, people that have worked in the school district, some for a very long time, and when we look at change, that's the challenging part. I don't think it's easy for anybody. But, also, when we look at growth of our school district and where we want our kids to be, and what skills and knowledges and abilities we want them to have when they leave our school district, change, change has to happen, and I think this is the best change for our students in, in three different areas. We have explicit instruction of social studies, which we know is missing in some of our, some of our classrooms. We have the library media piece, and we have the world language. I know that's not the popular opinion here tonight for, for people that are in here, but I strongly believe in this proposal.
And just a correction, Underwood's a .17 FTE out of .5, but I know there was some calls from the, the audience about that, so correct that.
Mrs. Ehrenberger, anything further before we open it up for questions?
No, no, no. That concludes the report.
All right, thank you. Then, I believe, Mrs. Randall?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. First, Mr. Chanon, your slide on specialist minutes per week, if you could show that once again.
Yes?
Okay, and, and did I understand you to say that the library minutes show how many minutes a student in SK receives library in a week's time?
Correct.
Okay. One of the things I've heard a lot from, from emails and conversations is that the library media specialists are extremely important in teaching the classroom teachers and the rest of the staff, you know, about technology, or what are the proper resources, and so on. When does that happen? Where are those minutes?
I, I can just say that the library, the information and technology, standards and benchmarks are posted on the website, and the premise of those has always been that the majority of that does fall on the classroom teacher. If you look at these standards and benchmarks, you're going to see that many of them are already embedded into our curriculum. We will look, we will do a review of these standards and benchmarks to see which ones of those more explicitly stand out as having been covered solely by a library media specialist, and look to ensure that those lessons are delivered and be able to do that lesson development. However, it is very difficult to look at these standards and benchmarks and think that they are taught in isolation of curriculum that we offer. So, you know, that would be a review that we would do to ensure that every, that these are implemented with integrity.
But, you know, the difficulty in understanding this is, you know, if the kids are there for 30 minutes, are the teachers then having prep time, or are the teachers engaged in the same exercises that the kids are? Are they learning along with the kids?
Currently?
Yeah.
Currently, the, the 30 minutes, the times listed in here are the times that the librarians, the library media specialists would be solely responsible for the students.
But, you, and this will probably, this will lead to my next question. Is this operation the same in every single elementary school? Does every, every senior kindergarten gets 30 minutes a week, and every staff member gets what?
30 minutes of prep time while they do that.
Okay, so.
It covers prep time for the teacher, so the teacher does not participate. Those are explicit times where library media specialists provide the service to alleviate the, to allow the teacher to have their preparation time by contract.
And that was something that confused me. Every single email I got that I read said, "We're, we're taking away opportunities for our classroom teachers to learn technology and to learn these, these library skills." So, I'm trying to understand if.
That classroom time is for, for children, for the learning of students, not teacher learning.
Okay, so, I'm hoping somebody can say somewhere where this interaction is, that that's so valuable and that we don't want to lose.
Well, I, I think to, to point out that that 8.3 FTE time, if you were to multiply the number of classroom minutes that librarians spend by the number of sections of school, it really comes out to about 4.4, 4.5 FTE out of that 8.3, that they're specifically directed to be providing instruction to students. It really leaves about half of that time, and during that other half of that time, they're providing that kind of resources to teachers that you're referring to. They're available to consult with teachers, manage the libraries, manage the collection, collect or account for fees for late books. You know, a lot of, there are administrative tasks involved in, in running a library, and also in providing support to teachers. It is an explicit job duty of the library coordinator in conjunction with the staff of aides to be providing that support. The reality is, we're not supporting nine different curriculums simply because it takes place in nine different buildings. There's one curriculum at the elementary level for the district, and we believe that that can be appropriately supported through one coordinator position and appropriately certified aides.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out when that happens, so. I had one other question, if I may.
Yes.
That was for Mrs. Ehrenberger, if I can remember it. It was, again, regarding minutes. You know what, I'll pass, I'll find it and come back to it.
Other board members? Mr. Meyer?
Sure. Just a comment on the presentation. I wish it did have up on the wall, but under the current way, the number of librarian minutes with children, under the old way, and the number of library staff minutes with children under the proposed way, so that it was right there, we could see the numbers, the now, the then, and so I know you've, you've said them.
Yeah, I think the difference is really going to be that, that there's going to have to be some planning on the part of teachers as opposed to when they want to be in the library, and they would be in the library with both their teacher and a library aide. It would not be a situation any longer where you would be going, taking your students to the library and saying, "This is now the 55 minutes a week when you're with a librarian." It would be, "I need to schedule time within my, my day to address these objectives," whether it's checking out library materials that are appropriately graded, or conducting a science research project, and going down there and actually having time, not with the librarian in isolation, but with the librarian present. It's actually going to be collaborative in that sense.
Excuse me again, if you could please withhold your comments so that we can conclude this portion of the meeting, then there will be plenty of time for comments from everyone who's present tonight.
Mr. Meyer, I understand your question, and I think we can put something together, like, that will clearly lay that out.
Okay. My, my second question is, when on the calendar does the board have to vote in order for there to be enough implementation time? I understand there's, there's, there's a teacher's contract that's in play somehow, you know, I'm not going to go into all the details, but there's, you know, if people need to be hired, they need to be searched for, et cetera, you know, there's a recruiting season, blah, 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 all these things. When does a decision have to be made if this is a yes decision?
If it were a, a drop dead, absolute latest, would be May would be the vote, but it would be a big disservice to our efforts to recruit qualified staff the later we put this decision off.
Okay, what's, what would be the date on a, on a, on a responsible lead time? More or less, I mean.
Mid, mid-February at the latest.
Mid-February. Now, I've emailed to, I've tried to email to everyone who emailed to me to lay out my position, and my position is basically, what I'm, what I'll summarize, is that we need to figure this out, because, you know, obviously, you know, I talked to my daughter who doesn't live in Madison, I mean, who lives in Madison now, and she's a PhD student, and, you know, I, I asked her, "Well, what are the fourth, what do you remember about library in Wauwautosa?" She said, "Well, I remember the, that we got pizza, you know, and that was big." And I remember the librarian with the big red hair, and, but that's important, you know, that's important, that's what everybody's saying, the kids remember the people. She said, "Dad, I, I remember when you took me to the UW-Milwaukee Library to do research." And she said, "Dad, I remember when you used our vacation to visit Ann Arbor, Michigan, and you walked me through their law library." And it strikes me that last year, while doing a, a class for a certification, even though I'm a licensed attorney, I had to take a school law course, you know, you have to keep going to school no matter what, I did all of the research from my kitchen table. Everything I showed her in that law library that impressed her so much, that, you know, motivated her, I did from my kitchen table. So, times are changing. So, we have to figure this out, how to provide the, the library services, and we have, you know, you know, Mr. Price, it's, it's amazing, the technology work he's doing, the language work, I can't begin to describe how important that is, that if we do this, we will be a bilingual school district, that our students will graduate as bilingual, from a bilingual student community. And, of course, we need the library services, and we need to keep up with how those services are being delivered. So, when we vote as a school board, it will be yes or no, but whatever it is, it can't be somebody wins and somebody loses, because the kids need all of these things, the technology, the library, and the language. So, when you come to the microphone, and I know you have, everybody's prepared everything, understand, we need to figure this out, so it's not about just yes or no. Thanks.
Mrs. Weber?
I'd like to say something to the audience. I really appreciate it and value all the telephone calls and the emails that I have received, but the one thing that bothered me a great deal, and I kept thinking about it when I got the, started getting calls on Saturday, that some of you felt dismissed and that your opinions were not valued. Speaking for one, myself, I look forward to those comments. That's why I serve on this board. So, I look forward to what you have to say this evening. And then, follow through just a little bit, Mr. Meyer, with one thing. One of the greatest memories I have with my son at three years old, when we would walk to the public library in Wauwautosa, the most beautiful institution this community owns, and we didn't go once a week, we would go two and three times a week, and today, he still is a reader, and the value that he puts in books, that, and he is far out, he's in his profession, but that's the importance for me of libraries.
Are there board member questions or comments? Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Thank you. I also very much appreciated all of the comments and telephone conversations and personal conversations I had with people. I'm looking forward to hearing your comments tonight. One other component of this that I, I would like more information on is also the, the language piece, and how are, how is the curriculum day going to look different for students? You talked about the immersion and that it's not a translation, and I want to better understand. to better understand, is, does this mean fifth graders will only have social studies in Spanish? I don't think that's what it means, or US history, or any other subject. But that piece, I'm looking for more clarity. And then from what I understood you just to say about library minutes, and that will happen in the new structure, is that the classroom teacher will now own those minutes and be able to allot them how they see fit? That's what I'm understanding from your presentation.
Yes, that would be, and they would have the resource of a library aide, but yes, the teachers would have direct access to the library.
Okay. Thank you. Did you wish to respond?
Yes, Sharon. The clarity on what it would look like is that while we looked at the Wanakee model, we're not advocating that we look at using just social studies benchmarks. We're looking at using content-related benchmarks that lend themselves to the teaching of the Spanish language, that best lend themselves. And that has been under the advisement of working with Dr. Curtin. And so, yes, in Wanakee, you would see social studies benchmarks. And we had, we did have some parents visit that program to see that actually taking place, that the actual benchmarks for social studies curriculum were taught in Spanish. And there were a few exceptions where at fourth grade, like Wisconsin history, possibly some portions of US history. So what we would be looking at is, you know, if there's a science, like the solar system might be an example of where in science curriculum, that might lend itself well to the teaching of, of being able to teach Spanish. I'm also going to let Dr. Curtin say something here, since she's grabbing my shoulder.
I just wanted to say, I, I think that only deciding to work with social studies isn't the best approach, because what we want to do is integrate language and content and culture. And the idea being that instead of just teaching, for example, just teaching colors, maybe we could teach the colors of the rainforest, the colors of the animals in the rainforest, the colors of nutritional food, so that it's not language in isolation, it's language connected to something in a meaningful way. Thinking about geography, looking at the continents, big, small, near, far, the solar system, the biggest, the smallest, the hottest, the coldest, the red one, the blue one, et cetera. Just finding meaningful things in the curriculum that we can connect the language to, so that we're teaching the language, that's the goal, but we're also reinforcing things that are in the regular curriculum. So we look for things in the curriculum to talk about. Of course, it would also be just language itself, but rather than adding numbers as a topic or colors as a topic, we always be connected to something that's meaningful. Does that help?
It helps a little. I mean, one of the specific concerns I hope we can address is, you know, there might be struggling learners in English.
Right.
And how will we not only meet, you know, their needs, we have put some infrastructure in place to be able to do that better, but, you know, how, we don't want to exclude anyone from this opportunity. And, and what would that look like?
Well, every child is able to learn language. And the, the children that will be in the program will be able to access the language because of the way that it's taught. It won't be taught in a textbook kind of fashion. It will be taught in a hands-on, concrete kind of fashion. So I don't see issues with students not being able to participate. And students with learning disabilities, depending on what their learning disability might be, also will be fine candidates to be in a language program. I would worry about kids with auditory discrimination, serious auditory discrimination problems, or serious speech issues. But we advocate that every child is able to learn a language and can be successful in a language classroom because of the way that we develop that curriculum.
Mr. Ray?
Let me see if I can ask the question more specifically that a couple of people have touched on. It, it has to do with instructional minutes. I think the target for first and second grade was 60 minutes of instruction per week, if I remember correctly. Is that 60 minutes of Span, combined Spanish and social studies instruction? Or would there be additional social studies instruction above and beyond that 60 minutes that may include Spanish? How, how does that break down?
That would be determined by looking at the benchmarks, the content benchmarks at each grade level. And we would, that'd be part of our curriculum development. So if, if a benchmark wasn't covered during the Spanish time, then it would be covered at other times during the, the child's day.
So it's not, you're not saying that the 60 minutes of Spanish instruction equals the only time that that student will spend in social studies instruction-
No.
-during the course of a given week?
No. That is, that's what the Wanakee model is, you know, which is one of the models that we looked at, that, that they do exclusively social studies benchmarks. And that is their social studies time. And actually doing that, they have seen an increase in their social studies WKC data has gone from, I think it was like 95 to 99 percent. So they actually have seen great benefits even in their social studies instruction doing that. But I think we're working under the advisement of Dr. Curtin that we probably can do a better job if we consider looking at our other content benchmarks as well. But we're going to look with most of the emphasis on social studies, because it does lend itself most aptly to teaching Spanish.
Then I just want to make a, a general comment, sort of a, a big picture comment. First of all, I appreciate a theme that comes out of everyone's comments from the table this, this evening, from Mr. Price to everyone else. And I think one theme that I'm hearing is we're looking at ways to address students and to try to figure out what's best to do for students. And I think that is very important, and I think it's good that we have focused on that particular theme and kind of kept it in the forefront on all of these issues that we've been discussing. Another thing that I think we need to be mindful of is that we're talking now about the possibility of implementing an elementary world language program and changing a delivery of how we have done library media services in the past. And I think Mr. Meyer said it clearly, and I'll say it a slightly different way. I, I think there's an educational benefit to adding a world languages program, if we can do that. That doesn't necessarily mean that what we have been doing with our library and media specialists is a bad thing, or that it's a negative thing. But we're living in the reality of an economic situation where we may not be able to do both. And so we have two good things that we've got to look at and evaluate and decide which one of these is going to become our focus. And unfortunately, this is going to become a scenario that's going to play itself out a number of times with a number of different issues over the next few years. And we're going to have to weigh difficult choices that are going to deal with positive educational options for students. And we're, we're going to have to realize that we can't do them all, or we can't do everything the way that we've done it before if we want to add something new. And then we're going to have to have reasonable discussion and debate about how to move forward on those particular issues. Because if we can't do that reasonably, and if we can't put all of those realities together in terms of trying to make decisions, we're going to kind of divide ourselves internally, and that's something that we don't want to do at, at many levels within, within the district. Now, I think that we've, we've heard and we've received a lot of different communications from the public with respect to this particular issue. And I was very much impressed with how the tone of those emails was also focused on what individual people perceive is best for students or their student. And I think that all of those, the great, the great majority of those communications, I certainly looked at as having a positive tone and trying to address the situation and to come at it from a very thoughtful point of view and how to move forward with the issue. So I, I think that's really where we need, I hope that's where we can keep the discussion as we, as we talk about this particular issue. Because what, as I see it, what we're really talking about is educational positives for students, realizing that we can't have everything we might want, and then figuring out the best way to move forward.
Mr. Kroner?
Thank you. Thank you for all the presentations. They're very informative. To me, these are almost two separate issues, so I'm going to ask a set of foreign language questions and other questions. First, I want to ask Ms. Toonster, you did a German pilot program, and we received some documentation. It just said it was successful. Can you describe what you did and how you, did you measure it to be successful? What were the outcomes?
Well, I think this pertains, or calls back to this question over here before then too, and how do you go at teaching the language and a social studies concept at the same time? We didn't have a curriculum for this. I observed content-related teaching of foreign language in other school districts that we looked at for our previous board reports. Nina would be one, and Ash Wabanon, and something, South of Milwaukee. There's another one, South of Milwaukee, can't think what it is right now. I want to say Burlington. So when you go into that kind of a lesson, you have a concept in mind that you want students to be able to, in my case, perform, to demonstrate their knowledge. It's a performance-based assessment, if you want to use that term, if that makes sense to you. And so for instance, if I have students, and was a benchmark in the social studies curriculum for first or second grade, identifying flags, for instance, of nations and associating the flag and that it represents a nation. Making the flag, talking about the colors in the flag, the shape of the flag, identifying the flag with the country. In my case, okay, that, that was pretty clear. I could see how I wanted to teach that. And getting the students to then be able to walk up to a smartboard and say, this is this country in the target language, in German in this case. Walk up to the smartboard and say, this is red, and this is white, and this is red. And to be able to take that language lesson, where I had taught them the colors, in the context of the flag, is combining content and language, and doing it in the language. Might be, and it was, for me, a learning experience, a great learning experience for me then too, because this is my first experience in an elementary school setting. I've been at the high school level for 23 years, or 22 years, knowing, for instance, now, okay, these little kids don't understand what a globe is. They don't understand that there's another country that we're talking about on the other side of the globe. So to be able to get them to understand that we're over here, and the country we're talking about, or countries that speak German, are on the other side of the globe, you had to get them to understand what a globe was and what that represented. And I believed that after two months of doing this with them and going back to our same rhythmical chants, that they were able to identify, we were on this side of the globe in North America in Wisconsin, and Germany is over here, and we took an airplane, imaginary airplane trip over there. And they could show me in German that they understood this. That's how I determined it was successful. I think the feedback that I've gotten from parents, I save a little email file called Lincoln, and they all, all those positive. And, and really, there haven't been any negative emails that have come back have showed that there's been great parental support for that. Observations by Dr., our, this is Ehrenberger here, excuse me, and other people who come in, Mr. Niemeyer, have shown me that I'm on the right track, and they can see that what we're doing has been in the target language 90 percent of the time, sometimes, some days more than others. There have been days that, conceptually, there's something that's difficult for them to understand in English, much less in German. So I can work with both languages and get them to understand. Students that I see in the hall can talk to me for a little bit in German. They, they came over to Tulsa East for a special project this year at Christmas, and were able to talk with my students in German and amaze my high school students with their language abilities. So I think based on those measurements, I can see it's working.
All right. Thank you. And I have to admit, I'm now confused as to what we're going to be teaching in, in the elementary school. And Dr. Curtin, I was going to ask you, why pick a content area versus 30 minutes a day of language instruction? It sounds like we have a-
Language instruction.
But it sounds like we have a hybrid of that approach, or?
Instead of, okay, instead of talking about your friend Paco and your friend Pepe, and that they went to the restaurant, or that they're not feeling well, et cetera, it's simply putting language in a more meaningful context that relates to the kids.
I understand that part, but the, the documents we have suggest that it's going to be mostly all social studies. But you mentioned science and whatever content area seems to be most applicable to Spanish. So is it going to be a blended instruction of all areas?
What I usually recommend to school districts is that they don't just go for one subject area, but they look at what could they pull from math? What could they pull from science? I'm thinking about animals and habitats, you know, as a wonderful thematic unit that could be done in early science unit. What, what can they pull? They can do counting by twos when they're dealing with numbers. They can do patterning from math. So in other words, rather than just only looking at one area, to pull, look and see what would be some areas from various subject areas that could easily be done in the target language because they're concrete enough.
Okay.
And it would give the meaning, something meaningful to talk about while you're still focusing on learning the language and the language skills. So it would be so easy to only teach colors, using color splash cards. And with the example Eva gave, associated it with flags of certain countries, that's the double whammy there then. So you're leveraging your language, and you're getting two for one.
Okay.
Not just learning that language label, but you're associating something meaningful with that label that connects to the regular curriculum. Does that help?
Yes. So if I can restate it, it's primarily going to be looking for benchmarks in social studies, but if subject, other subject areas are applicable, you will attach those to it and teach in those areas.
Yeah, one of the, we have five Cs in the standards of teaching foreign language, and one of them is making connections inside and outside of the classroom. And a lot of, for instance, the metric system. You know, we don't use it in the United States, but all of the countries that, for which we teach world languages, use the metric system. When we teach numbers, you can teach the metric system, and therefore you are making a connection to a math classroom. I remember teaching numbers to the students at Lincoln, and at one point, we were looking at how to make the number 13, which is three and 10. And I said, this is just adding them together. And next thing you know, they're adding other numbers, and then they can make the connections for 15 and 16 and 17, because you're adding 6 and 10, and 7 and 10. And so they're making those connections and meeting the standards. And those are the American Council of Teacher Foreign Language standards as well.
All right. Thank you. I received, we received a couple of emails asking about students in special education or with learning disabilities. So if this is going to, you know, if Spanish is going to be a regular part of the curriculum, how will that impact IEPs and kids with learning disabilities? Will there, there'll be additional expense to provide special instruction or lessons for those, or how will that be incorporated for those students?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I would assume that the kids with learning disabilities would take part in the Spanish class. They will take part in the Spanish class.
They would be included in the curriculum. We wouldn't be looking to exclude them from the delivery of the curriculum. I know that Teresa's done a little research into if there, for some of those students, that it could be extreme cases as to how those are handled. But really, in some, in some of the conversations that we've had is, this is one time when things are kind of equitable in the foreign language for the special education student, that they actually have more equity in the learning, because the background knowledge is, that is coming with the language is where the students are a lot more even, so to speak, or they're coming with the same amount of background knowledge. And so it actually helps to level the playing field in some ways for some special education students.
Okay. And I just had a question about staff savings. The library, current library teachers that are being transferred, is, is it revenue neutral because they're going to be filling positions that are open?
Correct.
Or will be open? Okay.
That's correct. We're looking to put them into places where there's natural attrition.
And I think my last question is for Mr. Price. It's about technology change. I like to think I grew up in a time of change, but after a recent challenge with technology, I overheard my kids ask my wife, why is dad turning into grandpa?
[laughter]
So I accept the fact that things are changing faster than I can keep track of, which leads me, you know, and that's what you're, you were addressing in your, your talk, is how do we, how do we incorporate the change in technology and the rapid flow of information into the school system in a way that's beneficial for students? So my, my previous conception was that for the school teachers, it was the library information specialist that kind of helped present and gu- it was the library information specialist that kind of helped present and guide teachers in that acquisition of new technology and managing the flow of information. How would you envision that happening under the new system as you incorporate the wireless devices and the tablets and as we move into the more of the digital type of information?
Last year, the, in June, the board approved the Information Technology Literacy Plan that was presented to DPI and subsequently certified by DPI. That plan was created by Technology Services Department, Student Learning, and also educators, library media specialists, and the General Walertosa Community. In that plan, there was mutually agreed upon recognition that our focus over the next three years would be, let me take a step back. The expectation that we set for our students in terms of information technology literacy, that we need to get our teachers and our faculty to that same level. That we can't expect the daily utilization of proper search techniques, the best way to research on the internet, the best way to find resources, et cetera. We recognize that that can't be limited to an individual area or specifically the Library Media Center, that it had to come out to the classrooms. Subsequently, the development of technology within the classrooms. And I guess you're asking, how are we going to migrate that to the classrooms from the LMSs? Is that?
I guess, I mean, maybe my impression is wrong, but my impression was that if I were a classroom teacher and new technology was coming to the schools and I needed to keep pace with that, that my interaction was with the library media specialist.
Right.
If that position is changing and I'm a classroom teacher, who am I interacting with? How am I learning about technology?
Oh, right, okay.
How is that going to happen?
Okay, yeah, I see what you mean. The Technology Services Department, as I mentioned in my presentation, is going to transform. We're not going to be so much a nuts and bolts department as what we were in the past. That's just the way this department has to change as we migrate more of the technical services offsite. So there'll be resources available there. The Elementary Library Media Coordinator, district teacher leaders, you know, we have the Technology Committee or Information Technology Literacy Plan Committee that was going to meet tonight, but because of everything that's going on, we're putting that off for another month. We'll be working on developing a plan to meet that need as well, so there won't be any holes.
All right, thank you.
Any further board member question or comment?
And I have a few. And I'd like to go back to the language program as opposed to the library media services. I was a little concerned when I read the materials and came to the meeting that we were being asked basically to have a de facto modification of the social studies curriculum. But what I'm hearing tonight sounds like that's not going to happen. But I do still have some concerns that we don't really know what this curriculum is, and I feel like I'm being asked to take a leap of faith. At what point is the curriculum going to be ready? I know you referenced curriculum writing over the summer.
It's one of those things that, to go through the expensive developing the curriculum, you know, not knowing if that would be something that we realistically could do. I mean, we can, we could have made it really simple and said, "Well, we'll just purchase Wanakee's curriculum." But I think that our goal was to do, to do better, to really look at that and to follow the advice of Dr. Curtin and to really look at how we could enhance what they're doing. And we, the team that did go look at the delivery in Wanakee, I think all came back like very impressed with what was happening. So when could it be developed? I mean, if we knew that this was something we were going to do, it's something that we would work on this spring and we'd like to have our teachers on board to be able to be part of that curriculum development. So having said that, I know that Dr. Curtin can send you in the direction of benchmarks that we're using with our secondary that are proficiency-based benchmarks, different than what we had been using in the past as we have been redesigning and redeveloping our curriculum. So maybe you want to add to that, but?
I wanted to say that the language curriculum is in place in terms of the fact that we would look at novice-level language kinds of functional abilities, being able to ask and answer questions, being able to describe, being able to introduce, being able to think. So there would be, being able to use certain phrases. So the part that isn't complete is, how will we do that? Will we talk about Pepe and Paco as we might be doing it in the textbook? Or will we relate to a math or a science or social studies thematic unit? So the ideas of what they'll be able to do with language, that we know. Those benchmarks are clear. But exactly, might we do it through a thematic unit of the solar system? Or might we do a thematic unit on animals and habitats? Or might we do, et cetera, a unit about the colonies? That is to be decided, to actually then connect and look at the Walertosa benchmarks in those areas and see which ones would lend them sounds the best.
Okay, that is helpful to know that there are benchmarks there that we just haven't seen them yet.
For language, absolutely.
Okay. Now, this covers first through fifth grades, and then in middle school, our language program starts in seventh grade. So what happens to the sixth graders? Is this the first event change in the entire world language department?
Yes. The sixth grade, at this time, there is a secondary scheduling committee that is meeting, and they're part of the long-range plan as well. So at this time, we would anticipate that we would need to, we'd be relooking at our middle school curriculum. We were waiting for the secondary scheduling committee. They're very much aware that we are looking at how we can bring world language to sixth grade, what that would look like, at what point. We've had some conversations with our current secondary world language teachers, like at what point would students have choice again? Certainly, our curriculum will be transforming for several years because as students become, each have more years of language development, we'll have to continue to adjust our curriculum, and that will have an impact at the middle school level as well. So yes, the middle school is being looked at as we're speaking and there, we've had conversations, they're aware of, you know, the elementary proposal and that it does have some implications for middle school curriculum as well, and as does the secondary scheduling committee.
And then another concern of mine that was raised when this was first proposed at an in-service months and months ago was what is going to happen to the other languages? I have an eighth grader who's in his second year of German, and when he heard about this, what he said was, "That's going to kill German." So there was reference to it in your presentation about how this might actually help other language and the population of other students in languages. But is there any data that backs that up? What is the experiential history of schools that have done a single language in elementary and then offered other languages in secondary?
Anecdotally, it hasn't killed any language. But my dream is this, that they would be able to continue their first language. And of course, this would be a huge challenge to that secondary committee that she was just talking about, scheduling committee, excuse me, and be able to take another, add another language once they get to middle school.
Wanakee's experience with that has been that they actually have found that students do change languages at middle school level when they have the opportunity. They have seen that that happens. That some students just get to decide that Spanish is not for them or that they want to change and might, and may switch over, so they have not seen it hurting their French or German program. The idea would be that we're promoting the learning of a language, any language, and again, not promoting that Spanish in isolation of French and German. Having said that, French and German in our district, you know, the reason Eva was free for a .2 FTE is because presently, that is a challenge that our district is facing. So we are already having some of those conversations because we know if you're a German or French student, that you may be in classrooms that are multi-level already. So, but are we committed to German and French in the district? I think we are, but we've also had similar conversations recently with world language teachers to say, "We also have to be fiscally responsible. We know that we can't offer classes of six students in a language." So again, those are opportunities for us to think outside the box as to how we can still keep those languages viable using technology and knowing that we want those languages to exist in our district more than not. So it comes back to some of those conversations about using technology for viability of a program as well. So, and Eva?
When I was in the Fox Valley area, I asked that question of one of the principals there, and he was also awarded with the Wisconsin Association of Foreign Language Teachers Support Person for the Year, and his speech can be found online. Between 70 and 75% of the students stayed with the language that they had started with in elementary school and then went on, and, you know, they had these jump-off points. Their first jump-off point was, I think, seventh grade. And so about 70 to 75% of the students stayed with the language. And, you know, that leaves 25% for French, German, and Latin. It's survivable. Is it great? Does it reflect what's happening in the United States? To a large degree, yes, it does. I, you know, personally have a vested interest in this too. So it's been a harder pill for me to swallow probably than a Spanish colleague. But I acknowledge the usability, the daily usability of Spanish. And curriculum, and going back to the line, doesn't matter what language you start, you know, the standards are the same no matter what language you're in. But it's great for your brain. It's great for your thinking. It's great for your global-mindedness. And that's something, in terms of preparing our students for the future, that we really, I think, cannot pass the opportunity up to provide Walertosa kids with that opportunity. Thank you.
Mr. Croner?
I just have one question. Before you settle on the alterations to the library program, can you tell us what other options you considered and rejected?
You know, obviously, the primary focus was on the need to meet the curricular objective within the elementary school day. I mean, there's just a practical level that you have to be able to fit the instructional time in that day. That said, we did look at whether or not there's any significant FTE savings to altering minutes of instruction in other areas. But because of the DPI requirement, we really couldn't. One possible area where we have beyond the DPI-required minutes was music instruction because we're offering both a general music class and band and orchestra. Most students who are participating in band and orchestra, they still receive general music. That's really rather impractical. Didn't produce six and a half FTE. And there's some space issues involved if you're trying to run multiple music instrumental classes at once. So it was primarily focused on those elementary programs because the reality is you can't just keep adding things to the day without sacrificing instructional time.
Well, just to follow up on that, I guess what I was hearing was there were going to be changes in library media specialist operations anyway. And I guess I'd ask Mr. Price, you, your presentations are always informative and amazing and understandable. But to put it in a capsule, I think what you're telling us and what you've been telling us as we've been investing in technology is that delivery of instruction has been changing and is going to continue to change.
Delivery of, delivery of?
Technology instruction.
Information and technology literacy standards.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, that needs to migrate more to the classroom.
So is that part of the answer?
And it's already there as well, right?
Right, but obviously, we're looking at what the standards were that were being taught by the library media specialists and where they fall within the curriculum. The fact that those are included within, both on our standards and by DPI standards, within the English, English language art kind of teaching block. And so we were looking at, you know, where's the room within an elementary school day where we can remove a portion of time to be taught by another specialist? And that was really one that we were able to do that because those are standards that are already addressed by or should be fully integrated into the classroom. And it's something that we really, we need to be moving towards. It's much, quite frankly, it's much like the world language program. You can't teach these technology skills in isolation, just like you shouldn't be teaching your world language in isolation. You really need to be integrating them with the content standards. I think that we're all, when we all use and utilize information, we're not just utilizing the skill of turning on a computer and doing research, but we're doing it with objectives in mind, and that reinforces that skill.
And then just one final comment, and again, with regard to all of the emails and phone calls I got, I attempted to respond to as many as I could, and then I began to realize I couldn't answer because I had not had this presentation yet tonight. We've had discussions as a board at open meetings and at in-services about all of this and the technology. We've known that something was coming together, but I had not heard, you know, that we are going to have either libraries or foreign language. So it was difficult to respond. I appreciate anybody's patience in allowing us as board members to have this presentation and opportunity to answer the questions. So if you emailed me and said, "Vote no," I probably didn't respond because I didn't know what I was voting on. And that would be extremely irresponsible. So I do appreciate everybody's interest and attention tonight. And I, the few people I was able to talk to at length, I think we really were able to, together, come to some understanding of what the issue is and to agree that it's going to be a difficult decision.
Anything further from the board? Before we open the microphone for public comment, I would like to also thank everyone who sent us comments and left phone messages, and I also tried to respond to many of them. Mr. Meyer stated that he was responding with his position. My position at this point is listening, and that's what this public comment section is for, so that the board members can be fully informed by their presentation, by the public, before we make our decision. So this is not a time for debate to go on between the board and the public. It's for us to listen to your comments. So please, given the number of people who would like to comment tonight, please keep in mind, our guideline is three minutes. If you can keep it to less than that, we would appreciate it, so that everyone has a chance to speak. And if you find that you're, that someone else has already stated your comments, you might just want to say that I agree with Mrs. So-and-so who was here earlier, so that everyone can have a chance to speak. So please, if you'd like to make a comment, come to the microphone, state your name and address prior to making your comment. Do I need to turn my phone on? Okay.
Excuse me, may I make, my position was, as of the time I stated it, and the, and it was included the words "my thinking is", and the idea that we need to work this out implies that the exact nature of specifics that exist at this moment could change in the name of finding a solution and agreement that is more acceptable. So just to say, just to say that.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Good evening, board members.
Excuse me, could you please state your name and address?
Yes. I am Jane Stortz. I don't live in Walertosa. Would you still like my address?
Yes, please.
Okay. W-155-7081, Amberly Circle, Menominee Falls, Wisconsin.
Thank you.
Thank you. And before I begin, could I just ask a favor to have you take that particular slide off? I hate to see what librarians do, reduce to just the minutes with the students because there's so much more that our elementary librarians do. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
As I said, I am Jane Stortz, and I'm speaking on behalf of all of the district library media specialists. I currently serve as a library media specialist at Whitman Middle School and with elementary specialist Betsy Daniels, I am co-content team leader. As you've been told, the directors have designed a plan to eliminate a vital portion of the elementary library media programs, which is the specialists. By doing this, they want to come up with the necessary funds in FTEs, or full-time teacher equivalents, to begin the world language program. Program. We understand that the World Language Initiative is part of the district's long-range plan, but when that plan was created, we do not believe that anyone thought its implementation would have this effect on the district's elementary library program. The plan is to replace the 8.6 FTEs of the library media specialists in the nine elementary schools with a single elementary library coordinator and 4.5 at library educational assistance. As library media specialists, we don't believe that each of the nine elementary schools will be able to maintain the quality library media program and collections that they now have. After reviewing the job descriptions the district has developed and the list of functions that library media specialists currently accomplish daily, it's clear that one library coordinator would not be able to help the students and the staff at the nine elementary schools in a comparable way. The educational assistants may be very willing, hardworking individuals, but that does not make them qualified. Library media specialists are required to complete over 30 graduate credits for a master's or certification program. We have asked the district, and we would ask you, to consider alternatives to this proposal. Is it really necessary to cut the fundamental, a fundamental program to initiate a new one? Why does it have to be one versus another? We are not suggesting that the district stop the World Language Initiative. However, we would, we have provided the school board members with research that documents the incredible benefits for students having a library media program that is staffed by certified full-time library media specialists. Please remember, for several years, the district has had a goal of improving reading for all students. The district, the district's current development plan for the 2010-2011 school year states in bold letters at the very top, "District Focus: Reading." We believe that the library media specialists and all the services that these programs offer are tremendously important to this goal and to our students' continued achievement. In addition, in the previous presentations, you have heard that the future transformation for our libraries as, as part of the district long-range plan. In both presentations, they referred to a statement that said the Wauwatosa School District will transform the learning environment, which will result in individuals who will embrace 21st century learning skills and who are lifelong learners. In reality, all of this is already occurring and is a continuous process in our libraries. These were never pilot programs, as mentioned before. They are just continuous progresses that are already occurring. We have also already taken the necessary steps in our libraries for beginning to expand our online collections by purchasing a new circulation system. With the previous system, these changes were not possible. We already use and subscribe to online databases, and now our circulation system can be linked to those resources. The libraries already have eBooks in our collections, and we are very excited that the district is interested in increasing the number of e-readers and mobile devices for our students to access these resources. The current vast print collections our schools now have cannot be instantly digitized. This is a process of building and transforming collections where library media specialists are the experts. We believe that the basic technology skills and information literacy skills taught at the elementary level serve as a foundation upon which the secondary specialists continue to build student mastery. At a time when information is at a student's fingertips, our students need library media specialists to help them develop the skills to analyze and evaluate what sources are reliable. We ask that you consider this research and carefully evaluate whether it would be in the best interest of our students to eliminate the credentialed elementary library media specialists in our district. Thank you.
Before we start, I just want to point out, that was six minutes. And I, just in consideration of all the other people, I would appreciate it if everyone could keep their comments brief.
Thank you. And that's why we chose one of the 13 librarians in the district to speak.
My name is Betsy Daniels. My address is 8008 Stickney Avenue, and I am one of the licensed library media specialists serving our elementary schools. And I wanted to address the question that Mrs. Randall asked about, when we are not in contact with students, what sorts of activities we do. And I thought I could best do that by talking about my day-to-day. So I got to school this morning, and I had to set up the computer lab in order to have two classes of four-year-olds come in to use the computers in collaboration with their teacher, doing math skills that are embedded in their curriculum. After that was finished, I went to meet with a first-grade teacher to assist them in creating digital voice files to connect with a spelling lesson that they were going to do with their smartboard. After that, fourth grade came into my library, and prior to them coming, I had met with the fourth-grade teachers, and they have been working on studying how electricity works and the scientific side of it. So not wanting to teach my skills in isolation, we did our research today on the history of electricity, tying it directly into their science curriculum. As we did that, we addressed higher-level thinking skills. I was asking the students to please choose eight turning points, and we talked about how a turning point led to change. And you had to decide, is this just an interesting thing, or is this a major thing that led to change? Major higher-level thinking skills and evaluating information. My afternoon was spent in a second-grade classroom assisting a teacher in integrating her four classroom computers and using them with her math lesson. That was my day. It was my shortest day of the week with actual documented student contact time, but I wanted to let you know that my hands were working with teachers and students all day, including my lunch hour. Thank you very much.
My name is Chad Layman, 8129 Jackson Park Boulevard. I am a parent of two students at Lincoln Elementary, and I wanted to share a few thoughts on the World Language proposal. While I'm generally in support of the program and our thinking, and our children will certainly benefit, I wanted to share one concern. Currently, there's a group of students at Lincoln involved in a German-language pilot program. These second and third graders have been involved in the program for about a year. According to the information from Mr. Niemeyer, these children will not be allowed to learn Spanish along with the rest of the students in the district. They must continue with German. What happens when they get to middle school and every other child in the district has been exposed to Spanish for two or three years, they'll be at a big disadvantage. If Spanish, Spanish is the district-wide language taught at the elementary level, these students should be allowed to make that switch. In addition, the Spanish-speaking language program that is currently being proposed concerns me very much. I'm in support of a language program but in concern that the proposal would eliminate the elementary library media specialists. According to the proposal, the money saved from the librarian salaries would be reallocated to the staff of the Spanish program. To me, this is not a good trade-off. I've been reading the planning document available on the district website involved in the World Language Program, which I do support, but I'm worried about the future of the library program. Now, the district has shared research showing the importance of students learning another language at a young age. What the district has failed to mention or has completely ignored is the research that states student achievement and test scores increase when schools are staffed with certified full-time library media specialists. I'm not looking, I am looking at this as a student achievement issue. The Wisconsin DPI conducted their own study of the school library media programs and came to the same conclusions. I've emailed all of you asking for your thoughts on the proposal, and I'm happy that many of you have shared that information. I've also shared that research. Educational decisions are usually based on research, and I think in this case, the, the school district is cutting a position that has been proven to improve student achievement and be positive for our children. There are sections in the, in the proposal called "Transforming the Library and Library Media Center." I feel every one of those ideas is of benefit to our children. However, in a quality school library program, these things should be done by the school librarian, not without one. The job description for that new coordinator position is what the current school librarians should be already doing. That's their job. One person covering those duties at nine schools is not going to cut it. Last Thursday, when I heard about this proposal, I noticed that a Facebook group was created with the idea to share parent concerns and comments. Within a couple of days, that group has gone to grow to about 150 members. And I encourage everyone here and board members and Dr. Erdl as well to join that group because there's some really good conversation going on there. Parents are sharing legitimate concerns and questions. And like was mentioned earlier, the comments have been positive. Unlike some of the comments that community members make on the Wauwatosa Now section and the Journal Sentinel comments, we know who's making these comments, and people are being productive and asking good questions. And I think it's a great place for everyone involved to keep this discussion going after tonight. So if anyone is interested, I know the URL is facebook.com/groups/tosalibraries. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lisa Williams. I live at 1935 Underwood Avenue. Many people, I think, will express the concerns I have about reduction in library media specialists, and I share those concerns. But my comments are related to the World Language Program. I have a daughter in second grade at Lincoln who is in German language. It's been a fantastic experience. I appreciate she has that opportunity. I appreciate she, there is a commitment, as my understanding is, that that will continue through her time at Lincoln. And I think it's been a great thing. My understanding is she gets between 16, 75 minutes of German instruction per week because Friday alternates, and she has not lost library media time. She still goes to the library. I'm not sure how that was constructed. I know it was a pilot program, and I know German is taught largely using social studies curriculum. I think it's been a great addition to her learning. I do question bundling these things together and saying that if we want to continue what has been, in my mind, a successful pilot at Lincoln, we have to lose our library media specialists. I, I disagree with bundling those two proposals. I think they should be considered separately on their own merits. Secondly, I was one of two parents, I believe, that went to Wanaki School District to visit their German immersion program. I was very impressed with what they do there. We did get feedback that I'd like to share briefly, which was that they said to us, and if anybody who was there today would like to correct my memory, that they would not recommend rolling this in in grades one through five at one time, that it is a recipe for, I won't say failure, but not for success. Curriculum has to be developed for five different grades based on five, based on beginning language skills. The fifth graders have no Spanish language, language skills. The social studies curriculum is advanced. If we are in favor of a World Languages program, which I am one, I speak three languages, I'm in favor of it. I was a German major, I'm in favor of it. Let's do it in a way that ensures success for our Tulsa School District and our students. Why do we have to roll it in grades one through five in the year 2011? I have not heard a response to that. And I believe it would be much more cost-effective if you weren't rolling it in five grade levels for eight schools and redefining a curriculum for all those grade levels. Wanaki said they rolled it in one year at a time, so by the time their kids got to fifth grade, they'd had four previous years of Spanish instruction. So they were able to handle the social studies curriculum, which is more advanced, with their Spanish language skills. So I fear that we would have fifth graders saying, "My name is," rather than learning Spanish. Thank you.
I'm Carolyn Dressler. My address is 8102 Aberdeen Court, Wauwatosa. I've lived in Wauwatosa for 45 years. I'm a strong supporter of the foreign language program. My husband taught foreign language in Wauwatosa schools for 35 years. And I know that my daughter has her PhD in linguistics because she was able, in the Wauwatosa schools, to take seven years of German, three of Latin, and two of Spanish when she graduated. However, I'm appalled at the destructive part of connecting these two and trying to fund the proposed for World Languages program by eliminating the library media specialists. The research is clear, as has been stated. Higher scores, library media specialists in school are tied. Library media specialists are teachers, and they strengthen reading abilities. They teach research skills. They teach technology use, and they collaborate with the classroom teachers. Ironically, technology is being used as a reason to eliminate the library media position when the only elementary teachers whose certification requires knowledge and skills in technology teaching are the library media specialists. It makes no sense. Claiming that techn, advances in technology will eliminate the need for library media specialists is as ridiculous as claiming that calculators or mobile learning devices, I'm also in the grandma, I am a grandma, and my five-year-old grandson loves the iPad, but it doesn't mean he doesn't need a teacher to teach him content. I'm sorry, I'm off my time. We can't say that, that just because people have calculators or, or mobile learning devices, they won't need math instruction. Come on, it's the same thing. Library media specialists are uniquely qualified to lead our students into an era of new technology advances, helping them use and understand the content, whether displayed on paper or electronically. And asking our dedicated teachers to take over the library media specialist's instruction duties for which they've not been trained is just not going to happen overnight. Many of them don't have that skill. The library media specialists are daily called upon to assist the classroom teachers. The idea that one library media specialist as a supervisor with three aides can do the job that our library media specialists are doing now in direct instruction is ludicrous. And the idea that perhaps we can hire some certified library media specialists and just pay them an aide's salary, oh, that's great. Maybe we can do that with other teachers, too. There are lots of people looking for jobs. Come now. Please don't harm our students, our schools, and our community by eliminating the library media specialist position. Our schools cannot afford to lose the library media specialists.
My name is Molly Del Vecchio, and I live at 3303 North 107th Street in Wauwatosa. I realize as school board members, you have a tough job. You must consider long-range plans, curriculum goals, state standards, new technology, et cetera. But at what price do we leave our school libraries without librarians? To eliminate school librarians is a tragic mistake. It's essentially a slap in the face to literacy, to inquiry learning, to what it means to love books, respect books, to seek, find, and evaluate information. I've heard it stated that the district is looking to, quote, "move our libraries to a place we think they need to go." Moving forward in terms of technology means that this is a time now more than ever that we need our librarians. In a New York Times article on the importance of librarians in the digital age, author Rick Riordan states that, quote, "A good library is the heart of a good school. A good library is the heart of a good school." He goes on to say how imperative it is not only to have trained librarians to teach the children how to access information, but also how to wade through it and evaluate it. Of course, learning language is important, but at what price? Yes, I know the proposal is to have one librarian circulating between schools, but this is certainly no substitute for what it means to have one designated, dedicated, qualified human being there day in and day out to guide the children. One cannot fully measure what a library staffed with a librarian means to our children, although I personally don't need statistics and study to show me what my own child so eloquently says herself. At the end of last school year, I overheard a conversation she was having with her classmate. They were talking about what it would mean to start a new school year and all the uncertainty this would mean for them. My daughter said to her friend, "Yes, but we don't need to worry because Mrs. Miller will still be in the library next year." I could go on and on about the ways in which my child has been affected by Mrs. Miller. And to me, what she says really says it all. The immeasurable ways in which we cannot underestimate the role of the school librarian, what it means to have Mrs. Miller and the other dedicated media specialists on a daily basis at the helm, keepers of the books, role models of inquiry. We do not want to leave our libraries, the hearts of our schools vacant of human beings who are qualified to lead them. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Deb Falk-Palik, and I live at 7435 West Wells. I'm also the chairperson from Milwaukee County's Commission on Persons with Disabilities. I'd like to say hace color, but I really would... I'd like to say, "Ase color," but I really would also like to start out by quoting Dr. Erdl, his comment in Friday's paper, because I agree with it. And he had stated, "We have a strong belief that public schools should offer options to parents and students." And I believe in that quote, and it's the basis of my comments tonight, and my comments surround students with disabilities. I have not, I don't have, I've not heard a clear plan about what is going to happen with students with disabilities, particularly those with cognitive disabilities, developmental disabilities, language processing disorders, auditory processing disorders, and the list can go on. We can all agree that we want all of our students to succeed. However, if we have children who are struggling currently with reading, writing, oral language skills in English because of their disability, I would like options. I would like to see what the options are. I would like those spelled out to the board. What are the options? That's a question I think that has not, I have not heard that answered this evening. Common sense would prevail, that English needs to be an option for some of these children. And who's going to do that? Who's going to do that if they're going to be taught in English? It really made me nervous when I heard that we are now going beyond social studies to possibly math and science. So who's going to do that for all of those core subjects that children need to learn things about? Who will be providing the accommodations, the modifications in the classroom for those children that do participate in a World Language Program? And how is that budgeted? Have we budgeted for that? These are questions I think needs to be answered, and we need to hear about publicly. I want to know what the process to determine who is allowed to learn in English. If our readings, if reading scores are so poor, or if reading scores are so poor already, how are we going to figure out who can continue to learn in English and be proficient in those skills? Somebody pointed out the district goal about reading. And if we look at the statistics of students with disabilities, we're not there yet. So are we going to unnecessarily burden them and cause them failure in moving forward with English language goals? The equity issue, I can see equity happening day one in the classroom between students with disabilities and those without. But once things start moving forward, those kids will continue to move further and further apart. I don't know what the research shows. I would like to see research on teaching students with disabilities. I'd like to see that from other school districts, what's out there. And I know that Dr. Curtin had shown a slide talking about students will lose out on jobs because they don't know a second language. And I would like to say, because professionally, I work with kids coming out of this district and other districts, that students with disabilities will lose out on jobs because they don't know their own language.
Hi, I'm Kim Bartels, 6826 West Wisconsin Avenue in Tosa. And to touch first on the World Language part, I think option is the key word. I think languages should be an option, not kind of forced on the kids. I look at my own experience. I started an elementary school with Spanish all the way up through graduating college. It was my minor. And if that was on my resume today, I wouldn't be getting a job because I can't use it because it's not used on a daily basis. I'm not using it in my normal routines. And if these kids aren't using it, and they're all in their routines, they can't come home and speak it to us, then how are they going to keep practicing it and using it as they get older and older and daily basis? So I really think it should be an option, not forced upon children to be learning a language. And I'm in the library one to two times a month since my daughter was in 4K. She's in third grade now with Mrs. Tibbetts, and I see how much those kids rely on her. My daughter especially, she loves reading. I have a bookcase full of books, but she comes home with those library books, and that's the only thing we're reading, because Mrs. Tibbetts can go and suggest lots of different series to her. She's a strong reader. She needs those upper-level books to read. And if it wasn't for Mrs. Tibbetts being there helping her out with different series of books and what's going to challenge her and just get her more interested in reading than she already is, then where's she going to be? She doesn't want to read those books on the bookshelf. She wants to read what Mrs. Tibbetts is going to suggest to her. And so I just really think that it's important that we keep those media specialists in the library.
I'm Sarah King, 864 North Honey Creek Parkway in Wauwatosa. I'm a Wilson parent, and I strongly oppose the district's proposal to eliminate library media specialists. For me, this is less of an emotional plea for the librarian's jobs than it is a research-supported, student-centered fight for their positions. Our students deserve, and our information and technology-driven world demands a professional library media specialist at each elementary school. DPI doesn't require instruction from a licensed library media specialist, but its research and conclusions clearly support it. From DPI, a high-quality school library at any grade level requires a full-time certified library media specialist. I'm afraid our administration is focused more on what this initiative looks like on paper than how it will function in practice. We're being asked to give up our library media specialists, the most critical components of our library media program, according to DPI and my personal opinion, to fund what is as yet an unsubstantiated elementary World Language Program. Dr. Curtin's presentation didn't touch on how the instruction should happen. In the current proposal, the amount of instruction will not be enough to guarantee true language acquisition or produce proficient foreign language speakers. The instruction proposed will provide what is an introductory exposure for the majority of kids. Benefits our administration is promising just aren't probable under this proposal. According to the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages, for elementary students, benefits accrue with instruction that is more frequent than twice per week, adding up to at least 90 minutes per week. Only fifth graders are promised 90 minutes, and no one will receive the 30 minutes that was offered in the Louisiana Study per day. One of the rationales that has been raised in support of this proposal is that companies value job applicants who speak foreign languages. And I agree, foreign language skills will be important for some of our graduates, but information and technology skills will be important for them all. The following is a quote from the article, "33 Reasons Why Libraries and Librarians Are Still Extremely Important." Technology is revealing that the real work of librarians involves guiding and educating visitors on how to find information, regardless of whether it is in book or digital form. Technology provides better access to information, but it is a more complex tool, often requiring specialized know-how. This is a librarian's specialty. They are certified teachers. They are specialists in information literacy. They teach research skills. They support and enhance literacy. They identify pertinent resources. They teach effective and ethical use of technology. They partner with classroom teachers to extend curriculum. Their presence impacts children daily. How can we, in light of the abundant research and in the best interest of our children, eliminate our elementary library media specialists, so vital in preparing our students for their future? This is more than a difficult decision, as Dr. Erdl stated. If this current proposal is passed, as it is currently written, I believe it is an irresponsible one. Mr. Meyer, to address something you mentioned earlier, it is forecasted that it will take until the year 2092 to digitize all of the world's printed works. With all due respect, I don't believe you were able to access all of that library's materials through your home computer. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Beth Haas, and I actually live in Waukesha, 2832 Emsley Drive. I was a library media specialist at Roosevelt for six years. Currently, I am the library media specialist at Waukesha South High School. This is my 15th year at working as a library media specialist. And I'm going to talk about the value of the library media specialist in regard to literature, research, and technology. You have some of the best library media specialists that I've worked with in my career. These people are professionals who know their students and staff. Each school is unique, and your library media specialists have developed their school library collections to match each school's needs and interests. Your library media specialists read professional journals to find the newest published books to match the needs and interests of their students. Did you know that there are over 20,000 children's books published each year? Your library media specialists know the curriculum and buy materials to support the curriculum. Although the curriculum is the same throughout the district, the reality is that each teacher is unique and has special interests. They deliver the curriculum to students, but they emphasize different topics and have students complete different topics from building to building. Your library media specialists are aware of this and use these topics as a basis for buying materials for an individual school. They know the reading levels of many of their students, and they know their interests. Your library media specialists promote a love of reading as a lifelong skill. Your library media specialists teach students the research process. Today, with all the information that is available, this process is more important than ever. Your library media specialists teach students about many of the resources that are available to them and how to use these sources. Research is a process that must be done over and over for students to get good at. Your library media specialists help students learn this process. When I was in Wauwatosa, we introduced new resources at each grade, each of the grade levels, so that when students went to middle and high school, they would have the experience with another, with the number of resources available to them. Because of the internet and the availability of information, this is more important than ever. By working as a high school library media specialist, I see this as such a vital part of the elementary library curriculum. We must begin to teach students about different resources at the elementary level. Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see. I got to keep going here so I don't oversip my three minutes. Your library media specialists are experts in technology. In their professional journals and at professional conferences, they learn about the newest technology tools and software available. They often take courses to continually update their knowledge with teachers, update their knowledge with teachers and students. They are able to share this information. They are also able to creatively develop projects that incorporate the new technology within existing curriculum. Classroom teachers are extremely busy with learning the curriculum, grading, communicating with parents, classroom management, and standardized testing. They often don't have time to stay current with the newest technology and software, and they often don't have time to really get familiar with it and be comfortable in utilizing with students. Your library, your library media specialists in the buildings assist teachers with the technology. Library media specialist's job has evolved in the last 15 years. In any professional journal, when you read about the role of the library media specialist, the experts talk about them as being technology experts and leaders. When I started 15 years ago, I was impressed with the Wauwatosa Elementary Library Department playing a key role in being technology leaders. We sometimes get caught up in the bells and whistles of technology and the cool things we can do with technology. Is technology motivational for students? You betcha. But through my observations, students must still learn to read nonfiction, take notes, evaluate information, and synthesize it to make a presentation or develop a product. Your library media specialists teach the students of Wauwatosa these skills. I have been through having a school district eliminate the elementary library media specialist in Waukesha. The elementary program does not exist any longer. Yes, there is a library, and students can check out books. I hope you realize that a library program is more than just checking out books. I've continued to have conversations with several elementary teachers in Waukesha. The library, technology, and information skills are not being taught to the extent they were with library media specialists, and I am often told they are not being taught at all. New books are not introduced to their students. Eliminating your strong library program just doesn't make sense educationally to me when reading, research, and technology are lifelong skills that every student will need as an adult. These are skills your elementary library media specialists provide. Please think long and hard about this proposal. Sure, a Spanish language program sounds neat, but at what cost? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Michelle Streit. My address is 2130 North 64th Street in Wauwatosa. Ditto what a lot of people just said. I'm going to go off-script a little bit here just to add some warm fuzzies to this discussion. I remember my librarian when I was a kid. I went to seven different schools growing up. We moved around a lot. And I remember my librarian, Mrs. Carr, from Worthington Hills Elementary School in Ohio. And thank God for her. Elementary school for me was a very tough time, a little bit on the tall side, a little bit on the skinny side. And thank God for Mrs. Carr. She pointed me to books. She got me on Bivouli Cleary and Judy Blume. She introduced me to The Wind in the Willows. And she let us come into the school, our little group of friends, we were weird, and we'd go in and put on plays. And that's the kind of stuff I remember. Times have changed, absolutely. We're in a digital world. Our methods of research have become a lot more sophisticated. I have a daughter. She's in first grade right now. I have a son who's going to be coming up to the Wauwatosa system here. And I think one of the things that struck me was that this idea that a librarian is now like an antiquated, obsolete kind of position, and that all these information products are going to sort of replace that. And I volunteer in the library. I come in and I clean books, and I reshelved them, and I, I give about two hours a month. The parent volunteers right now, at Washington, we have three of them, and in total, maybe we give eight to 10 hours towards helping to maintain the library, and we put a tiny dent into what all there is to be done. Some more warm fuzzies. I'm going to share two examples as being a fly on the wall in their meditatively cleaning books and listening in on what's going on in that classroom. Two things. Number one, Mrs. Durango, my daughter's first-grade teacher, shared to me, my daughter's excelling very well in reading, and she was pulled with a number of other kids who are doing well in reading, and taken in by Mrs. Desmore, our Washington elementary library media specialist. They did a sort of mini research project. They chose an animal. They did research and pulled facts about that animal, and not from their own knowledge, and created a paragraph. My daughter's six. I don't think I've ever done anything like that when I was six years old. That's amazing to me. Those are building blocks to those skills, those media skills, those library skills. Mrs. Desmore is, is not just someone who goes around, you know, shelving books and shushing students. She, she spends a very small part of her time at the class checking books out. She's there to help develop their skills, and library skills are absolutely essential. One other thing I overheard the other day was she had a group of older kids that she was getting together, and part of their research was, they had to choose a planet. They had to do research on that planet, find facts, and then use technology. They either had to choose developing a PowerPoint presentation, or they had to put together a brochure on Microsoft Publisher to advertise their planet to intergalactic vacationers. And that is just something that is fun and creative, and I wished I was a student again, so I could do something that cool. So please consider very carefully whether eliminating these positions are not going to just have a soft impact as it seems to be presented, and I hope our words will reach you all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Greif. I live at 1606 Martha Washington Drive in Wauwatosa. I'm an assistant professor of legal writing at Marquette University Law School, and I'm just here tonight, besides being a parent of a Washington elementary school student, to give you a little bit of my personal experience teaching research as part of the legal analysis, writing, and research curriculum that we have at Marquette University Law School. One of the things I wanted to call your attention to, actually, besides that, is an article that appeared on April 10, 2010, in the JS Online. The title is "School Librarians' Key to Reading," and it's by Mary Wepping, W-E-P-K-I-N-G. This article is very informative. It gives some really good statistics that I hope you take a look at, if you haven't done so already, which you might have. And what it talks about is the statistics of the Kenosha school system and the literacy rate and reading proficiency in the Kenosha schools across socioeconomic lines that students are doing very well in reading and literacy in Kenosha. And Kenosha, as you probably know, is a school system that decided to keep their elementary library media specialists. In comparison, the article notes that in the Milwaukee Public School District, a school district that apparently has chosen to terminate those positions, the literacy rate has really significantly reduced since significantly reduced since that time. So I found that to be very convincing statistical evidence, hard data, about the efficacy of these wonderful library media specialists. Just really briefly, I wanted to tell you about my experience with print research and online research. As an attorney, to Mr. Meyer's comment earlier, I thought that was really interesting. He's right. Most material is now found online in terms of law libraries. So most law libraries contain the print materials, but you are expected to know how to access it online as well. The complexity that has arisen because of online research today is astounding. Two weeks ago, I spent three hours just talking about the most recent changes to a program called Westlaw with law librarians, and how we are going to teach our students about these changes. It is not enough to cut out a library media specialist in the elementary schools, because I really think that what's going to happen is you're going to have total illiteracy of students with regard to online technologies and figuring out how to do basic research. So you are going to have kids who basically are illiterate going into the middle schools with regard to these resources. If it were as simple as print materials, perhaps maybe somebody could help them through it. But it's really the fact that our online sources are changing so rapidly that our kids need to be able to understand these concepts early so that they're not playing catch-up repeatedly as they go into the future. I think that the students at the law school are really lucky, because we give them a lot of support and a lot of really directed assistance. But what about the kid who graduates from high school and doesn't go to college? What is that person gonna do with regard to their research and online literacy as well as print literacy? So, thank you.
Hi, Alan Look, 1540 North 117th. This is definitely a difficult decision, as foreign language is important. However, I would hope that all options were explored. For example, has there been research into, say, a fee-based after-school type of course to gauge how popular is it? You could gauge all the different, you get the kids started off with the basics, and then they can start doing different homework, whether it's social studies, math, science, and you can proceed that way. And I know the data may support saying just the complete immersion is the success, but each case needs to be taken independently and separate. And I really hope that all the, that all options are truly explored and exhausted so there isn't the rash decision made. Thank you.
My name is Anne Kissinger, 3206 North 100th Street. I love the idea of moving forward in technology and access to information for everyone. Unfortunately, this will not be the case, and transition takes time. I have already sent my letter of concern to the board from my family's viewpoint. Tonight, I am speaking from the view of a children's public librarian. As you are well aware, not all homes are equipped with computers or eBooks to access information for formal education or personal enjoyment. I have literally seen children in tears when told they cannot check out the book in their hands without a library card, nor would they have access to the internet without a library card. I refer them to their school librarian in confidence because they are going to teach the children the difference between a dot com, a dot org, a site that has a monetary gain or one viewpoint, or why a site might contain undocumented sources. The professional librarian knows Mercy Watson is great for vocabulary development and sentence structure. Captain Underpants and Diary of a Wimpy Kid might snag a reluctant reader. The children read Rainbow Magic Berry books like eating popcorn, one after another. But it is not enjoyable for an adult to read aloud. The Twilight series can be read by a third grader because it is written at that low reading level, but due to content, it will not be recommended to the demanding child that wants to read the popular series. This knowledge is gained due to a full-time status and loads of professional research and preparation. I feel for the one coordinator in your proposal. As we transition ourselves and lives to technology, it is extremely important that the children have access to professionally trained, full-time media specialists in all of our schools for their formal education as well as for enjoyment, regardless of their home environment. Thank you.
Abby Miller, 1248 North 117th Street. I never do this, so please take that into account if I faint. I am against removing the library services position, but I'm not gonna talk about that right now. I am a former Spanish teacher, and I'm really upset about the way that this proposal is being taken into account by the board and being proposed. First of all, I've taken a lot of notes, but I didn't plan on speaking, but I really couldn't not come up here. Starting kids early in foreign language is very important. I will agree with that. But 30 minutes or 60 minutes a week is not even doing anything. It's not worth their time of the teachers, and it's not worth the time of the students to sit there and struggle in class and not understand what's going on with social studies or whatever subject they're trying to teach them. I took Spanish from the time I was in sixth grade through college, majored in it. I studied in Spain, and I love the language. I love the culture. I am one of 600 of my graduating high school students in my class who went on to teach Spanish. One of 600. And that's in the Chicago area. So you know the population there is a lot more Hispanic. 60 minutes a day or a week, I'm sorry, is not enough to make these students bilingual, and it's idealized to think that it would be. The other thing that I wanted to say is that there was a proposal that there would be $7,000 worth of materials purchased for 60 minutes of class. That seems kind of like a lot of money to spend on 60 minutes. So if you were gonna teach Spanish or whatever language, I do back that. The way it's being done, I don't back. And how much time is being given to it, I don't back either. Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name's Dave Weinbergenzey. I live at 2119 North 69th Street, and I want to thank you all for all the good things you do for our kids. I have three kids in the school system, two have graduated and moved on to great things, and one is just finishing up in grade school. And I want to support the concept of world language. Our world is in need of people who have a whole series of literacies. I want to give you a little background. I am also the library director at Cardinal Stritch University, so I have a little bias, but also some skin in this game as well. And I do support this not as a, I support the idea of keeping our library media services people not as a measure for them personally as their jobs, but because of the services they provide. That being said, of all those literacies, language literacy is one that is needed. America is an isolated place when it comes to other countries. I just don't believe that it has to be an either-or. And Frau Tunstra, who taught one of my kids, is probably gonna kill me afterwards, but I'm, I have to do this anyway. And I think it's, or I'll get a call from my little brother as well. What I do wanna say is that it's sad that, that yes, America is behind in our language literacy. It appears we're also behind in working together to add things and get multiple things done at the same time, because the information provided about what's being done in European countries must mean that they're able to do multiple things that we're not able to do with our current political structure or with the way that we work together. I represent librarians who work at the college and university level. You heard a few minutes ago from a faculty member, and I can tell you that the DPI, K-12 librarian media skills that are in our standards for the K-12 are not all reaching up to the higher education level. And we're having to reteach some of those same skills up at the top level, and if we cut back on what we do at the lower level, it's going to make it even worse for us. We have to do a lot of remedial education at the university level, and that comes when yet another global initiative is upon us, which is that our president and the president of many other countries are asking that we graduate, provide at least an undergraduate education for a much higher percentage of our overall population. We in the state of Wisconsin sadly have an even lower rate of college graduation than many other states in the country, including many of our neighbors here in the Midwest. We need these basic transferable skills to help reach those students so that they can graduate. Lastly, I just wanna say one thing that really overtook me by your message before, Mr. Meyer, and from all the things that I heard tonight. One of the things that's saddest to me about this is that the people, our library media services people, were not integrally involved with the planning of this whole thing. And whatever comes to it in terms of a solution, as you said, it needs to fully involve them, whether that involves some compromises, like it may have to at some point. It can't happen without everybody in the room who participates and have their skills to offer. Thanks.
My name's Leigh Ann Fraley. I live at 7025 Cedar Street in Wauwatosah, and my children go to Jefferson Elementary. And when we moved to Wauwatosah five years ago, we considered not actually even sending our kids to Tosa. Not that it wasn't a great district, but we really wanted language for our kids. And so we looked at French immersion school and Spanish immersion school, et cetera, and we ultimately decided to stay here at the district. And I have to say, I was really excited when I joined the new long-range planning committee, and I saw that Foreign Language, World Language Initiative was, looked like it was gonna be coming about. And so I will be very transparent that I am an advocate for a world languages program. I also wanna be very transparent that I've debated for the last two years about whether or not I wanna run for school board, and I've met with Dr. Erdl and some other school board members, and I have to say that tonight, I don't envy any of you, and I'm glad to be on this side tonight. And that's for one reason. And I think it really comes down to that we have caused a big amount of confusion by putting these two issues together. And it would be very difficult for me, if I was in your shoes after tonight, to make a decision, because, one, while I applaud Frau Tunstra and Dr. Curtin for a good presentation on what world languages can do, and while I agree with you, I feel like there's a lot to still be worked out. I have worked in curriculum for years and years. I'm a national site advisor at the New Teacher Project, and the idea of creating a curriculum that you could hire and roll out in September is just a little concerning to me. The other side of things that I would just highlight is that I think I'm most excited to see the turnout tonight, and I wish that I could say for these folks that they would get this response at all of their school board meetings, because they are doing things that impact your kids every single day, and some of them aren't so sexy, like, you know, the feces stuff or whatever it is. I was trying to write down and learn something. But what, I'm not a business, you know, gal, but what I would say is this, like, I think you first need to decide whether or not this foreign language program, as it is proposed, is going to really be all we're hoping it can be. And this is not to say that I don't want a foreign language program, because I want it more than you know. At the same time, I have a fantastic media specialist at my elementary school, and the either-or of this is really tough. And I'll be honest, in my line of work, Dr. Erdl did exactly what I would have done. I would have never gone to a board and said, "I want this new program that's gonna cost money," without saying, "And here's where I think we can cut it from." But I think having the investment of the community, and even more importantly, the investment of your teachers who only found out about this last Wednesday, is really concerning to me. I wanna end on a high note, because I really think it's important to acknowledge that I work with underperforming dysfunctional school districts across the country, and I am very excited to be able to say that I work in a district where I hear technology presentations like Mr. Price's. And I've had the opportunity to talk to Dr. Erdl on several occasions, and that when I call a school board member, they call me back, because that is not the norm, people around the country. So we are very, very fortunate that we are even able to be having this debate, and that we, as parents, are being heard. So I would just like to acknowledge the service of the board and the work that you do, and just encourage you to make sure that when you make your decision, you first feel great about what it is, the program that you're voting on, before you decide to cut something that has already demonstrated success in our students' lives.
My name is Lee Spohler. I live at 1831 North 71st Street in Wauwatosah, and our library media specialist is Betsy Daniels. And everybody made such wonderful points tonight that I concur with, and I, but I wanna say, I have a child who's a little different learner, and our librarian, our library media specialist, is one person who, at the elementary level, knows your child from 4K all the way through fifth grade. And as your child changes, and there's a different teacher each year, it's wonderful for a person like me, or for any parent, to be able to refer to this teacher who they've had their entire career in elementary school, and say, "What have you seen that is changing about my child?" And to talk to them about how they're doing in school, and it would shock you how well they know your child, and to me, that is a marvelous and wonderful thing, and I too think my, both my children will remember their librarians, not only in elementary school, but in middle school, and they do so many, so many more things than we could imagine beyond their, their job. So, that's it.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Nuccio, 7123 Etna Court. And I'm up here because there's one point, I, first of all, I'd like to see both programs. I definitely don't wanna lose the media specialists, but I like the idea of the foreign language program. My one concern that I have not heard addressed yet with the language program is what we're going to do for those students who transfer into the district. Since you're planning on using the Common Core standards, what's going to happen to a child who comes in at fourth or fifth grade, where everyone is very advanced in the understanding of Spanish, and you are teaching social studies with that? How do you catch them up and make them proficient in those Common Core standards? And then also, from a parent perspective, if my child does not do well with one of those standards, is it because of the foreign language, or is it because they didn't understand the concept itself? So consider how you're gonna decide which way a child is not proficient. Thank you.
My name is Paris Prokopis. I'm at 2535 North 70th Street, and I've got three children in the school district, two in the elementary school level. Curious how this will be addressed. I've got a third grader who's just about, you know, she, she's gonna be, they're gonna be kinda be behind the curve, and then obviously my kindergartner, who's gonna be right at the beginning of the curve. How that's gonna be handled? I'm a total proponent of this world language concept to some extent. I, I do agree, though, that a half hour a week is insignificant. I'm saying that as an individual. I speak four languages, my, you know, Greek, English, Spanish, French. So I've, I've been a busy boy all my life. I went to Tosa schools and, for high school and stuff like that, although I did not have a very good librarian experience. We used to call her Colanda Librarian. She was a bad, it was a bad situation. We need some laughter in here tonight, so. But one of the things to consider, somebody mentioned that article from the Journal Sentinel regarding the Tosa, or the Milwaukee MPS School District versus a Tosa School District, and it's all because of the library media specialist. I'd argue and say it's also because of the teachers. It's not just the library media specialist that's making a successful, a successful school system. But in considering this, I don't know that every, every option has been considered. There have been a lot of articles out there about- There have been a lot of articles out there about different schools using programs like the Rosetta Stone as their educational tool for language to help get people started in languages. And it's not as big of an investment to do, and it could create a possibility of ultimately keeping both, but I can understand, you know, ultimately, we need to also make sure our teachers, not just one individual in the library media specialist, but our teachers become versed in technology. They just have to. It's the way of the future. And more teachers, newer teachers that are coming in, that's the way they're learning. So, everybody's got to keep up with the times. It can't just be dependent on that one individual, otherwise, I'm sorry, it's doomed to failure because it's only one person with hundreds of students. It's just, do the math. It's very difficult to do. So, and, please don't raise my taxes. Thank you.
Too late.
Too late for that one.
Hi, I'm Beth Thule, 2468 North 88th Street. I have three kids at McKinley Elementary. I'd also like to let you know that I'm an interpreter, and I didn't start my second language until I was 22. And I'm fluent in a second language that I did not start until I was 22, so you don't, it's not, you're not going to be proficient if you didn't start in elementary school. But I, I love the idea of world language. I think it's fantastic. I'm concerned with the amount of time that the kids will get. 6th grade is where I think you should start, because you'll have 1st through 5th grade doing stuff, and then they'll have off a year, and then they're supposed to start back up again, and 7th grade doesn't make any sense to me. And also, if you look at what you do in summer school, for six weeks, a kid can take, I believe it's 55 minutes a day for six weeks, and that's the equivalent of 27 and 1/2 hours. And you have your 1st and 2nd graders slated to do 60 minutes a week, and that comes out to roughly 37 to 40 hours, and that's over the entire school year. And I saw what my kids learned in summer school, and you're going to stretch that out. It doesn't make sense, and the curriculum will not be the equivalent of what they'll get in 1st through 5th grade if you're teaching in Spanish. It makes sense to start in 4K or 5K, where you can teach calendar, and you can teach colors, and you can teach numbers, and basic language skills. That makes sense to me, so phasing it in maybe. And I don't understand trading one 21st century skill for another one. World language and all the cultural implications that come with that is one 21st century skill, but library skills and the technology skills is another one, and the media specialists are just that, they're specialists. But the other thing that they do, that our librarians do, that Carol Serge has at McKinley does fantastically, is give the kids a love for literature that they might not get in their classroom, because she knows the kids, and they go to her and say, "I like this kind of book. What can you find for me?" And she's ordered books specifically for kids. She gets them excited. She matches the kid with the literature. They have Name That Book, which is a battle of the books. Kids read books that they never would otherwise. There are kids reading some books or listening to some books that they would never choose, and they would never be involved in that kind of thing. And they have other things that get kids so excited about books. And reading, how much reading a kid does is equal to their success. There's been so much research. It helps them on standardized tests. It helped them in school. It helps them out of school. It helps them be successful for their entire life. And I think that's something that you can't take for granted and think that's going to happen. If you go back to the library I had in grade school, which was checkout, and this is the card catalog system, and this is how you use it. It's a totally different experience, and I invite you guys to go to one of the elementary libraries during library time and see what library is, because when I went in and volunteered, I was like, "Wow, this is cool. This is not my elementary library experience." It's different. And then the last piece is if you eliminate some of that technology learning that they're going to get, the kids that have that stuff at home might be fine. The kids that are going to get hurt are the lower socioeconomic kids that don't have the access, don't have the parents that have the access, don't have the instruction. They're going to miss out. Thank you.
My name is Mary Johnson. I live at 2283 Ledington Avenue, Wauwatosa. I have two students, two children that attend McKinley Elementary. I just had a couple of points that I had jotted down as I was listening to the discussion. The first thing that I think someone else brought up, but that it concerns me, that we don't have a curriculum that's been planned out, that they want you to vote on, something that we haven't really seemed to have thought out yet. It, it seems like it's kind of thrown together quickly. I, again, I, I think foreign language is important. I love, I took foreign language, but again, I also didn't start till I was in 6th grade, but I had no problem becoming fluent, and I went to a foreign country and did fine when I was in college for a summer, and, so I, I think it's crucial, but I don't know that it has to start at elementary school. The other thing that I had, a lot of people have mentioned that the teachers should just take on this new technology, but I know that our classroom teachers are very overburdened already. It was said in, I think, in the article Mr. Erdl had, Dr. Erdl had said that they're currently not covering social studies as thoroughly as we'd like, because they're teaching to the test. They're teaching the math, they're teaching English, and so I think it, it seems, it doesn't make sense that we're, we're saying that they're currently overburdened, they can't teach this as well, but yet we're going to give them something additional that they're expected to do. Also, the, the pilot, I guess I'm not clear about the pilot program that's currently going on, but those students, you said, aren't missing their library time. And so somehow that's being fit into their curriculum, the minutes, I know someone said, "Well, we need to make time for this program." But in the pilot program, it seems like there's time for both, and so I guess I maybe need more information on how that's working for the pilot program, that they can fit in both, because I, I can think they're both good programs, but I don't think we can throw out our library media specialists for a program that, like you said, we don't even have a curriculum and such for currently. And then also, I just wanted to mention, my, my son is in, my oldest son is in 5th grade, and I had mentioned I was going to this meeting tonight, said that this is a very important issue, because it affects all the, you know, elementary student, children. And he said, "Well, that doesn't really affect me, Mom, because I'll be in 6th grade next year, right?" And I said, "Well, right, it doesn't really affect you." He said, "But, he said, "But, you know, all the other kids, it's going to affect my younger brother and all those other kids." He said, "I should write an email. I should get all the 5th grade students a sign note to write an email, because Mrs. Serge is such a great job. I don't want to lose her in our, for the other students." So I had.
My name is Mike Gifford. I am a Tulsa resident, 8127 Hillcrest Drive, with one daughter at Longfellow and two daughters at Lincoln. Long before kids, my wife and I chose to live in Tulsa largely because of its good public education reputation, and want to begin tonight with a thank you. A thank you to the board, to Superintendent Erdl, and everyone involved in the recent anti-bullying initiative at Longfellow. This ignited a wonderful conversation about respect and safety among our kids that will have a meaningful impact, so thank you very much. I urge you to maintain the library media specialists and the current model of education to assure the success of reading, research, and information literacy in our district. These staff people, these library media specialists customize education to our kids to strengthen their reading skills. These staff develop the research skills in our kids necessary for high-quality, rigorous academic pursuit and success in their lives, and these staff develop the information literacy of our kids necessary for effective communication now and in the future. Reading, research, and information literacy are essential skills that must be of the highest priority in our public schools. Reading is the area that we have objective measurable data in the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction's School District Performance Reports. Most recent data is from the year 2009, 2010, and it doesn't show a great picture for Wauwatosa. Tulsa is a middle-of-the-pack district in reading. Actually, we rank 5th among the 11 schools within our DPI group. Alarming to me, 1 in 7 Tulsa 10th graders are not proficient in reading. 1 in 7 10th graders in this district can't read? I find that very alarming. It's interesting, in Tulsa elementary schools, the school with the lowest library, research, and information literacy staffing level, Underwood, has the lowest reading level. This is not a time to cut back in any way our commitment to reading education. Often I consider the Elm Brook School District as a school district Tulsa should benchmark itself against. They've made a significant investment in library services, and it shows, with reading scores that are 5% to 8% above ours. I'm also disappointed to learn in a survey of Tulsa elementary school librarians that in the last year or longer, few, if any, district leaders presenting this proposal tonight have observed the reading, research, and information literacy education provided in our libraries. It's simply irresponsible to make this significant of a proposal without a clear understanding of the services currently provided. The recommendation before you tonight diminishes reading, research, and information literacy education, and is not a win-win situation, as it was spun in today's paper. It's a proposal that harms our kids. Finally, on the World Language Initiative, I support this effort, and one of my daughters has benefited from it. I would encourage the board to seek alternative avenues for support. For example, again, from DPI, Tulsa has the highest number of administrative staff in our school grouping. If our administrative staff was at New Berlin's ratios, based on our higher number of students, we would have five fewer administrative staff. If our administrative staff was at Shorewoods' ratio, we would have seven fewer administrative staff. These more administrative-lean districts have quite a bit higher reading scores than Tulsa. This is not a critique of our current administration, but an example, one I am sure of many, of another way to achieve the district's world language goal without harming our kids and their reading, research, and information literacy education. Please seek alternative funding so that we do not have to pit world language against reading. It's a phony choice that will only harm our kids, and one that if we need to make, this recommendation makes wrong. I just have to defer for a moment. As a, as a father of a special-needs child with auditory disabilities, I am so offended that you all sit here and say that this will level the playing field. It won't for my daughter, who struggles in English and will struggle with this. I am so offended. This district is better than that, and this district has been better for my daughter with her, her disability, and I expect more from its leaders. Thank you.
Thank you all for your comments tonight. I know sometimes it's intimidating to come up in front of this crowd and in front of the board as we stare at you, so if there's someone here who'd like to present their thoughts to us, please feel free to email. Also, I know that there are sometimes, people come with contrary positions but don't like to speak in front of a crowd, which is clearly in the opposite side. So, again, anyone who didn't feel comfortable speaking tonight, please send us your comments in written form. Our, our email addresses are all on the website.
Can I say one thing?
Yes.
I just wanted to make one comment. Earlier on in the public comment, there was an invitation to participate in a website discussion group that's taking place. It's difficult for board members to participate in a group like that, because if the wrong or too many of us get involved, then we can be in violation of open meetings laws. And so, we probably will not be joining that discussion group. It's not because we are not interested in taking you up on your invitation, but there are legal issues that we have to be aware of for that, so.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
I'd just like to make a comment to everyone that spoke and about all the emails I received. There's been a lot of discourse recently about the nature of political discourse in our country, not to get too broad about things right now, but I've not been in the board that long, but I have been in Wauwatosa when there have been many other contentious issues, and I really appreciate the fact that everyone is approaching this at such a high level. We have an important decision to make, and we received a lot of information, and it's really helpful and pleasurable to have a discussion at the level that we're having it, and I hope that can continue, and I'm glad that you're participating, because we can't have the district that we have without parental support. So, thank you for being here, and thank you for sharing your comments, and we do take them seriously, and it's just nice to have the discussion that we're having. Thanks.
Anything further, board members? Mr. Meyer?
I, I'm all about that, let's work this out idea. I'd be interested to hear if there were any thoughts from the board or from the superintendent. I'm particularly interested in Lisa Connor's comment that it is, will be difficult to start 5 grade levels at, at a beginning level, and how will we work with them as the years go by? And to take the proposal as it is without board collaborative discussion to an up or down vote, somebody's not going to get what they really think is important. And, and so I, just to put that question out, just, any thoughts? It's late, I know.
I didn't really hear your question. I heard a lot.
Okay.
You're asking if you'd like to have further board discussion.
I would like to have further board discussion, and it seems that if we have discussion the night of the vote, then we're locked into all or nothing. We're all worn out now. I, I have some thoughts, but I, it's often not responsible just to toss stuff out and people grab onto it, and it turns out to be a silly idea that has some practical things that won't work about it, to give people false hope, you know, so I'm not quite sure how to proceed.
I think we have received a lot of information tonight from the administration in three different departments, from the community members and from our fellow board members, and I think perhaps we need some time to process that before deciding whether or not this will come before the board in its current form or some other form. The administration, I don't know what their plans are, obviously, but I don't think that we have to decide that at this point. This matter will be on the agenda at the next meeting, whether it will be in this form or for board discussion. I think that we need to ponder after hearing all this information. And I agree, we're worn out, and I don't think it would be wise to propose changes at this time.
That's why I'm not saying anything.
Mrs. Randall, you had your hand up?
Well, yeah, I, I think one possibility is, I saw all of you diligently taking notes, Mrs. Ehrenberger, Dr. Curtin. Do you feel that you have something to add in the way of informing the board with regard to the types of questions that came tonight? And if so, would it be productive to have one more informational meeting prior, prior to the meeting where we vote? And I think that's a discussion.
I would like to discuss that with Dr. Erdl.
Yes.
And not make that decision.
Thank you. Yeah, if you would do that, I would appreciate. I'm, I really am on overload. I mean, you know, we really, not because anybody wasn't clear on either side of this issue, but this truly has been our first opportunity to get the real detailed information. So, and I think any individual board members that would like to contact Dr. Erdl or Mrs. Ehrenberger and say, "I really would like to know a little bit more about this," and then make the judgment, and if you feel that you need to bring it for a vote in two weeks, and if some board members feel they need to table that, whatever. So, that's my response to Mr. Meyer.
Mr. Carter?
I feel overwhelmed but energized at the same time, so I'd like to ask a couple of questions while it's fresh in my mind, if I may, some what we've heard. There is a DPI study that was referenced that I looked at also that talked about increased reading skills or literacy if there's a full-time librarian in the schools, and there's also been reference to studies about increased reading skills and literacy when you have elementary school foreign language programs. What weight should the board give to those two studies? I mean, reading is a very high priority for me in the district, so how, as a board member, how should I weigh those two, and which is going to have a greater effect in our schools?
I don't think that's hard tonight.
I mean, I can answer that. I think that's, that's the crux of your decision. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. It's a, it's, you know, you're being asked to take a look in which, you know, whether it's based on research, and hopefully you look at the research. I'd like to feel that everything we do in the district is based on solid research, otherwise we won't be doing it. So, it really... So it really comes down to, I think as a board member, the decision is, in its current form, one way or the other. I mean, I don't think it's which research is better. I think that's, I mean, I think that's a personal call.
I didn't mean which research is better. I'm just wondering in terms of impact of literacy on our kids, which from a professional point of view, how should we weigh those two types of studies?
I mean, I think if you look at the number of studies in terms of the foreign language, they tend to be paired studies with control groups in terms of students receiving foreign language instruction and students not receiving foreign language instruction, which tends to add to their validity in terms of the effect. The DPI study was really a descriptive study that took a look overall at all Wisconsin schools, kind of described the programs they had in attempt to pair school districts, which is obviously a much less precise program than pairing students. If you look at that study in detail, they also pair a lot of other different things that also impact literacy in terms of library service, one of which is number of volunteer hours from parents, presence of an aide, number of books checked out by students, and a lot of other things than just purely whether or not there were full-time certified staff available. So the reality is we're not eliminating all the library support services and we're actually proposing adding aides in particular that do have some impact on that study as well. So it's not an all or nothing. And, you know, in terms of validity of study, I do think you have to look at, you know, research design, one being simply a mining of data, the other being tending to be paired studies.
All right. And my second question is more of a procedural one. When this comes before the board, will it come as one vote with everything packaged together or will we be voting separately on the foreign language program and the library program?
The way it's set up right now, what you'd be voting on is the staffing changes, the additional positions for staffing, not necessarily the curriculum, because the board doesn't necessarily vote on curriculum, but it really is the staffing positions that you would be voting on. The new positions, the coordinator and the aides positions. So it would come back as a recommendation to add the coordinator and the aide positions.
And the foreign language positions are part of that at this time?
No, I'm sorry.
Money.
The world language positions as well.
So that's going to be one vote for all positions together?
Well, may I, procedure, we are the board. We decide how we vote, you know, it, I'm, I'm, you know, we're kind of putting Dr. Erdl on the spot to ask him how we want to vote, you know, we'll, you know, you know what I'm saying. It's like, our president is very procedurally capable to handle splitting.
Well, in that case, at this point, I would express my preference to have two separate votes. I think if we, the board goes in the direction, we want to move forward with the foreign language program, but we may decide to find a different way to put it together, that would be one, that could be one result. So rather than have, my opinion right now is rather than have one vote on everything, I'd rather see the two programs separated because I'm not sure they should have been paired in this way tonight.
Okay. There are some things that are appropriate for board vote and some things that are not. And so that may create some difficulty, but it's certainly something to look at. And if that makes any sense.
It's just two sets of positions. That's all I thought that that was about.
Sure. Mrs. Muehlfeld?
I'm just going to throw it right out there. I have concerns following this presentation and public comment regarding the technology infrastructure we would have to initiate a plan like this, the curriculum and how that would be delivered in the foreign language and world language component and also the library media specialist component of this. And what is a district do we want? We've clearly heard tonight from a large constituency, also, you know, in previous messages that this is a very valuable position and a key to literacy and reading, which is our goal. So I really, if I had to vote on this in two weeks, I need a lot more discussion and I am not at all comfortable with that.
Well, this is, this is what we do.
We have proposals, we have presentations, and then when we come back to vote, hopefully administration will have answered any questions that we come to. If I would call you tomorrow and say, okay, this point, this point and this point are concerning to me, how are you going to handle those? This is typically how we do it, correct?
Correct.
So board members, it's incumbent on us to contact Dr. Erdl and so I'm going to retract what I asked you, Mrs. Ehrenberger. It's incumbent on us to let him know what we heard of concern and how he will address that and for him to share that before the vote. And to your point about having it separate, we have given him clear direction at every single evaluation that when he brings a proposal to the board, he also needs to bring a funding mechanism. And so that's what he's doing and now we're, now we're talking about it. So, you know, I, we're going to be hearing the same questions, we're going to be hearing the same comments, you know, if we do this again. So I do think it's incumbent on each of us to individually ask Dr. Erdl before the next meeting what we want to know, have that discussion and then make a decision. Because certainly I feel like we've gotten tons and tons of information from many different places.
Mr. Carter?
I'm just going to state for myself, I try to do as much as I can publicly, so I tend not to call Dr. Erdl privately in between meetings to get things done, so.
How can you get some information?
I have to differ with my colleague on that. What else was I going to say? You know, we set our own agendas and our own timetables. We should be able to do that. So if the board doesn't feel comfortable that they have enough time to consider an issue, we should feel comfortable asking for more time.
Sorry, one more question. Can we have, I mean, if any other board members interested in the phase-in approach, I am interested in hearing from administration on that and how that would work at the elementary level. I thought that was a very good idea tonight. Thank you for that.
At this, Mr. Carter?
Sorry, this is important. I'd like to keep talking.
It was supposed to say something, that's all.
You know, when Congress considers important bills, they're out there for months and months and people talk and they negotiate and they work things out. And one thing that frustrates me being up here sometimes is we get a proposal and we're forced to vote in two weeks and we don't really get a chance to talk about it or even to try to compromise. So regarding other funding mechanisms, regarding a role in approach, regarding other ways to accomplish something that clearly many people support, you know, it's not unreasonable for the board to ask, to take more time to talk with more people, to try to reach a compromise that's best for all the students in the district. And it's unfortunate that we're once again in a position where we're, the board is in a kind of a take it or leave it position and it's really uncomfortable. So I hope the board will in the future consider putting some different kind of direction on these kinds of proposals so that we have more time to discuss them, more time to interact with the public and truly come to a consensus where everyone feels that we're moving forward together.
Mr. Ray?
I apologize for prolonging this, but we have been talking about this issue for a long time. We've talked about it coming out of the Long Range Plan in 2005, 2006. We've talked about it in terms of developing new rigor, new textbooks, a new approach to how we teach world language in our secondary schools. We've talked about it in terms of introducing a pilot program in elementary school. So to suggest that we're just starting the discussion right now is not accurate. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me. This will be back on the next agenda in some form. At this point, we are going to take a short break. I apologize to those that are here for the Montessori program, but we'll reconvene at ten, excuse me, 11:10 after a brief break. The next item on our agenda is the superintendent's report, specifically the Montessori program proposal. I believe Mrs. Keats will lead the discussion or the presentation?
In support of Mr. Chan and Mrs. Keats.
All right. Mr. Chan?
Most of this presentation is really what, what we've reviewed before and I'm not going to dwell on it, given the hour, but I really wanted to give specificity to some of the questions regarding how the program would be staffed. I think we had unanswered questions about specialists, we had unanswered questions about administration, and I really wanted to kind of focus on those. The first whole bunch of slides that I'm going to just go right through are really the same ones from last time in terms of assessing community support and the survey results. I just didn't remove them from the presentation because I thought we might as well chat them in one convenient place. You might see a modification in terms of who would staff the program. We really had continued debate about the two different Montessori certifications and, you know, at this point, we really went back to the position that we probably would not preference, excuse me, we probably not preference one particular Montessori certification over another, although it does remain in importance that we're going to be getting dual certified people. In other words, elementary school DPI certified along with a certified Montessori staff. And then the aide ratio does change and I'll, I will actually go into greater detail about that when I, we use the traditional staffing formula to come up with what the specialist staffing allocations would be in terms of FTE, basically looking at minutes per week for the different levels, converting that to a percentage of someone's full-time contract, breaking up for the typical art, music, FIAID and potentially Spanish, depending on how that goes through. And then looked at what that did to our overall staffing, which you'll see here is the number of teachers increases, one and a quarter, approximately two and .26 and 3.69 teachers. But what it reduced on the other side was rather one-to-one aide, the aide time is decreased over, as the school increases. Before it was basically an aide per classroom. That's reduced. The Montessori model contemplates having an aide in the classroom and having a three-hour block of instructional delivery time in the morning. We would retain that model, have the aide present through basically the lunch hour to assist with that because there are some instructional components to lunch in terms of life skills. And then the preparation time would be achieved by using specialists, similar to a traditional elementary school, but then we would back off the aide time because we wouldn't need an aide because those students would be being serviced by a, by a specialist during the afternoon. There will be some challenges in terms of scheduling specialists to be at the Montessori school in the afternoon because most elementary schools, there's a, there's a high degree of flexibility as to when the specialists are there. So it creates kind of a fixed point in their schedule, but given that we have nine elementary schools, I don't think that that's going to really be a significant problem because the other elementary schools are flexible or more flexible in their day. So this does change the numbers slightly, but it's actually, the total costs projected are really within the ranges that they were presented before, they're just a little bit more precise. The other unanswered question is the, was, who would be providing daily administrative oversight for this program? And that would actually be provided by an administrator within our building and in particular Dean, Dean Hoist would be serving as the administrative leader for the school. And that kind of addresses that piece. There'd be no additional compensation for that, but part of his duties now would be being available to that school. An administrative assistant support would then fall on his administrative assistant to do some of that. But given the small, relatively small numbers of students, we think that that's reasonable and feasible. We are still working on custodial support plans in conjunction with business services, but that's something that's going to have to be finalized and we're still working on that with the Fisher Building in general. So that's the significant change there, answering those questions about specialists and what the daily schedule will ultimately look like. But we, again, wanted to reinforce that notion, that potential notion of the revenue. Really, the far right column is what we're seeking to achieve here, which is attracting approximately 60 students based on the interest survey, who are not currently attending our schools, increasing our aide for, increasing our actual student enrollment as a district with resident students. That's the goal and you'll notice that that figure, 637,000, offsets the additional cost of the proposal.
I think one other point with the revenues, and I know I mentioned it last time, but when we're looking at additional students and resident students, it's really the first year that we can truly delineate the difference between new students and not new students. Once we get it going and we're in year two, it's really just additional students and that, if you look at the last line where it says, "We target 75 students regardless of whether they're new students after the first year or they're continuing students." And over time, 75 students under current limits is $797,100 that can be allocated toward, not used for the school, but we can look at our revenue limits and say that much authority of revenue is based on those 75 students over a period of four years. So once we would get there in over four years, that would account for that much revenue. Obviously, or assuming it would be higher in later years because that amount goes up to some degree, so.
So those are really the primary questions that, you know, we would, we'd come back with a little bit more specificity about, like I said, the adding of specialists rather than having teachers teach specials was really, we believe, the best alternative to provide service to the students and cover teacher prep time. Otherwise, you're really looking at a model where students would be spending a good portion of their day primarily taught by an aide in order to provide teacher prep time. And that was something that we didn't think was in the best interest of students and the costing of the specialist staff, because they're fractional pieces of staff, really didn't add significantly to the overall cost of the proposal.
Mrs. Randall?
I don't know, maybe I misunderstood initially, but I thought that under the Montessori model, that, that the classroom teacher did teach the specials? That Montessori, they don't generally have art teachers and music teachers and...
Depends on the Montessori school. You know, I would...
I mean, the true Montessori model.
Yeah, I would say, you know, Waksho Montessori, which prides itself on aiming to be a Montessori training center and aims to be very authentic, has art, physical education, music and Spanish specialists as part of its program. Part of it, you know, really the core authentic piece is that three-hour uninterrupted work cycle in the morning, kind of to, to be in tune with that philosophy in terms of time of day that's optimal for learning. That's really kind of the core component. Different schools deliver specials in different ways. We have the challenge where we're delivering a full day of instruction within the confines of our, of our teacher contract. I mean, we need to be able to provide prep time. We need to be able to provide those minutes for our teachers to prepare within the student school then. school then.
So even if we wanted to have a Montessori accredited person who wanted to teach that way, our contract wouldn't allow it.
It does. We would just need to provide prep time in a different way.
And I think when you look even at our instructional minutes, even our elementary instructional minutes, for example, with art, or, especially some of those are provided by a specialist, and then a certain number of those minutes are actually still provided by the classroom teacher. So for example, with music in particular, there's a certain amount of general music curriculum that is delivered by our current elementary staff. So there's supposed to be a level of partnership between the specialist and the classroom teacher, and that type of partnership would be ideal for the Montessori program as well.
If your recollection is accurate, because we did say particularly with the children's house model, K-4, K-5 typically in elementary schools that do consider themselves authentic, that classroom teacher takes care of the specials, with the exception of usually FIAID.
And I've been hoping that whatever we implement is as true as possible to Montessori, not just...
Not just in name.
Yeah.
And I think a lot of that is really going to be making sure we have very well-trained Montessori teachers, making sure that we have the materials, because so much of Montessori is delivering life skills with appropriate materials. So for example, having porcelain china to serve lunch on and let the kids practice eating off of using washing their porcelain china, and the philosophy being, you know, sometimes in real life, those plates will break, and so your child is really learning and practicing those skills in children's house. So, or the mathematics with math manipulatives, playing with sets of 10 and actually manipulating beads that are sets of 10 and so on are really core to it, and I think that anyone who walks into the school recognizes it as a Montessori school.
Can I one follow? On the same vein, I just totally forgot what I was going to ask.
That tends to happen at 11:25.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Let's let Mrs. Weber ask a question.
Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Weber.
I beg your forgiveness, because I'm going to ask some questions, but I wasn't clear on these, so I'd like to repeat. We are not at this point considering lower than first grade. We're looking at a first through fifth combination there, and I realize there's, at the upper level, it could be three, four, and five. The next one down would be one, two, and three, a mixture. But we aren't looking right at this point of having J or senior kindergarten.
We're looking at junior, senior kindergarten combination?
Oh, we are.
And what's really being left out from a typical Montessori model is the three-year-olds. That's...
The three-year-olds.
The three-year-olds.
So we were looking at three classrooms.
Correct, and if you look at the third grade, and probably one of the questions, why is that in parentheses? Is because the third grades are really going to divide into either...
I know what that is.
Okay, sorry.
That isn't... And the specialists, could they be people, if we go with having specialists other than the teacher, could they be people that are already in our district?
Yeah, there could be, there could be a couple of ways in which we, in which we staff that. We could take a look at that complete FTE time, so for example, .23, and attempt to hire, or the, let's go, if we hired 75 and we had .69, and attempt to hire a 70 percent elementary all-subject teacher, and then have them work with our existing specialists at other buildings, where we basically have two Montessori staff who then have shared responsibility to teach specials. The requirement from DPI would be that they would have basically supervision from a certified specialist in the area. So, you know, that licensure, elementary all-subjects, really would allow them to teach all the specials. So if we wanted to, say, move towards making sure a Montessori teacher delivered all subjects, we could do that. There would be some additional cost, I believe, because I think we would have to compensate our, some elementary specialist at some building to oversee what curriculum is being delivered, if that makes sense.
Excuse me a few. No, I'm sorry.
Could you review, or are you going to cover, the funding for this? Are you going to speak to that tonight, or how are we going to support the Montessori school?
Yes, you are. Well, it's looking at additional students that'll be in there, so within the budget, the existing budget that will be brought forward will include the staffing plan and the resources for starting the school. So it's coming from within the existing budget. So when we bring the budget forward, it will be included in our proposal, and offset by, I think the projected revenue would be, or projected, projected increase in students will have an impact on the budget process.
Do the families of the Montessori make a separate, I'll call it a tuition, it is not, but do they make some contribution to the school?
No, they will not.
Okay. It's purely within our own budget?
Correct.
With the, with the one exception that we met, we intend to offer for our junior kindergarteners the opportunity to stay through the afternoon, basically provided onsite daycare that dovetails with the Montessori program. That would be a tuition base, and we, in our calculation of staffing, would anticipate that that revenue will offset part of the cost of the aide, basically pay for itself.
And what about the lunch program? Will they take part in our lunch program, or do they, will that come out of their separate school?
They will participate in lunch program.
Okay. So that's, so it'll be a part of that?
Yes, right.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mrs. Weber?
I don't think so at this point.
Thank you. I didn't mean to try to interrupt you, Mrs. Weber.
That's okay.
I had a couple of questions on the demographic, and it comes out of the survey and some of the comments we heard at our last meeting with the three-year-olds. And I, after other investigation, understand why we can't fund the three-year-olds, but in the, and I should let you know that I went to tour Craig Montessori. Thank you, Ms. Keats, for helping me set that up. And it was really an interesting experience. I didn't go to see a private Montessori. Craig Montessori is a Milwaukee public school that has three-year-olds to eighth grade, a program. I did visit all of the three-to-six-year-old rooms. It was, it was quite impressive, actually, I have to say. The students were very well demeanored. They were doing their work even as young as the three-year-olds, and it was really amazing to see them in the individual responsibility setting as well as in the group settings with the pull-out teachers and how they were going about their, their work in the classroom, their, their learning. So from what I understand about the Montessori program, the strength of it is to have the multi-age. And when I look at this proposal, it's really just a half-day of four-year-olds and then all-day of five-year-olds. Is that just the building block to lead into more classes later of the mixed students, you know, by grade level?
Well, I think if you look at the way we broke it down, I mean, obviously, they're multi, they're all multi-age classrooms, but you're correct. The JK, SK classroom, the core work cycle will be in the morning when the JK and SK are there, and then the SK will basically be participating in what many Montessori programs call the extended day program, which typically the three- and four-year-olds don't participate in. Typically, they participate in the SK. Now, I know that you went to a model that has the JK there all day, but that's not necessarily true in all of the schools. Some of them refer to the senior kindergarten afternoon time as extended day, and the kids age into that over time. It is one of the reasons we, you know, we obviously considered, would it be feasible to have two JK classes, a morning and an afternoon? And the reality is you can't for exactly that reason. You can't have a morning in a multi-age work cycle, then at the afternoon, because you won't be able to repeat that multi-age work cycle. And that was a consideration in considering what kind of classes and what kind of enrollment we could have.
So then I just wanted to touch on what to the residents of Wauwatosa understand we're going to do, because I think if I'm reading, you know, the work of this committee, they really wanted a blended three-to-six-year-old program, and we can really only offer them a half-four K program and an all-day five K program. So is this really the investment that will be of value, let's put it that way, for lack of a better way to do it right now?
I think it speaks to another concern, which is a little bit larger, more philosophical concern, which is when you start looking at three-year-old attendance as something that becomes funded by the parents, you're basically putting those families in the same situation that those private Montessori students are in, which is it's fully dependent upon the ability of the family to pay for that child to be or attend as a three-year-old. And our whole point of making this available through the public schools is to have it accessible for all, all who are interested. We already put those families at a disadvantage if we put a price on having their three-year-old attend. And since we don't receive the funding for our three-year-olds, we felt that this was most fair to our families. At least, that's how I'm looking at it. I know that it's difficult for some individuals to reconcile the fact that the Montessori philosophy has it going down to three-year-olds, but that happens to be the reality of the funding structure for public schools.
Well, I just definitely, you know, obviously, if we undertake this course, we're going to take it for at least five years, is what I understand, is, you know, the minimum investment in a program like this. Just so I'm clear, the SK, so we start out with JK and the SK, and after the first year, then the SK, the JK moves to SK and the SK, I mean hypothetically, if we have all the enrollment, that returns, and then we create that first-grade class.
I think the proposal actually is to offer, is to offer admissions for JK through five and to run the school based on enrollment, that there'll be applications and we will have a deadline at which we say, yes, we have sufficient class to accept and run, and it may be quite probable that the 75 students would be at, between JK and up through third grade and not up to fifth grade, but I think that there'll be a certain amount of actually putting out the applications and seeing what kind of response we get. And we may have to tell people, not a no, you're not accepted, but a no, we were unable to run a third, fourth, fifth-grade class.
So we want to start out four K to five?
Yes.
And with preference for kids who have previous Montessori experience?
At every level except JK.
Every level, okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
Last meeting, I voiced some questions about whether the specials had inefficiency in the scheduling format, and Mr. Chenin has discussed it with me, and I've now seen the light that it's not inherently inefficient. It gets to be a mathematical management thing that he has to do to figure out what to do, but it's basically a good value for us when done correctly, that we have specials that travel between elementary schools. Just wanted to close the book on that.
Ray?
Contractually, do we have to make any special arrangements with our standard contract language to accommodate teachers in the Montessori program?
I've talked to the union. Our biggest point of negotiation will be the need to establish start and end times to the teacher day. I think, you know, as we discussed here, they're going to be covered via contractual prep time language, and it is our responsibility as the administration to create the job requirements and the job description. And so it's not something that's negotiated, although they can negotiate the impact of that. So the short answer is no. We would basically be creating a job description for a Montessori teacher that will include that additional certification. We would anticipate placing them on our regular teacher schedule and that the union would have no disagreement with that, and that we've already discussed about the fact that we'll, we'll need to create beginning and end times that day. One of the things that we discussed was the need to have that beginning time, perhaps late enough so that our Montessori students can, the ones that participate in band and orchestra at Underwood, because it's close and it's one of our smaller orchestra programs. So those rehearsals tend to be in the morning, and we would then, you know, they would be able to start their day there and then come here, and we'd have a little bit of a later start.
And then a procedural question with respect to the anticipated motion for approval, assuming we've thought about this detail. Are you anticipating linking approval of the program to a commitment for enrollment for a certain number of students by a certain date? For example, were, the motion could be worded so that it's to approve going forward with the program if by April 15th, we have X number of students who have committed to being involved in the program for the 11, 12 school year?
Yes.
Okay.
Mrs. Weber?
When you surveyed for potential enrollment, what type of assurance could you look to that they weren't just surveying a little bit about the proposal we have, or that they really were interested enrolling in a Wauwatosa Montessori school? What do you...
None. I mean, I think that really the end result is that we really, if we believe these numbers to be somewhat accurate and we don't have any reason to dispute them, the real proof is going to be when we offer, offer the opportunity to enroll and see who applies. We really don't have any, any guarantee that there wasn't a small minority of the parents who took the survey 160 times, I mean, in theory.
We have anecdotal responses to that. I have been getting phone calls, inquiries about that, are we moving forward with this? And they have identified themselves as private Montessori families. So there has been interest.
I would say if they're calling you, that gives a pretty good indication that they are probably interested. And then the band and orchestra, if we would do that at Underwood, it would be the parent's responsibility then to pick them up and bring them over to school here, right?
Unfortunately, yeah. I mean, that's just the nature of neighborhood, school-based district. And we just put Underwood out there as an example because it has a smaller band and orchestra, and it's nearby.
Well, obviously Eisenhower is probably closer, but I think that this would actually help support the Underwood program, which is a little smaller, so there's a little bit more room perhaps for that additional participation.
And they wouldn't have to cross North Avenue if they were going to Underwood?
Just water town playing.
Yeah. It's, you know, obviously, I think when you select your non-neighborhood school, there are certain choices you, as a parent, are making, and I think that there are many people that would want the benefit of Montessori and be willing to trade off a certain amount of driving.
Governor?
I have a question about the two different associations. Are the teachers trained by either association compatible? Do they have the same philosophies of the Montessori program?
Well, the AMI Association, Montessori International, is what is considered to be the one that most closely follows Maria Montessori's... the one that most closely follows Maria Montessori's philosophy and implementation of the Montessori program because it originated in Europe, okay, with Dr. Montessori. Now, obviously, AMI, American, am I saying that correctly? Yeah. AMAS, excuse me, American Montessori Society, has virtually the same philosophy, but it has more of a, I would say, 20th and 21st century kind of approach to it because it developed out of a culture based in America and it developed later. So it, it's difficult to explain it without going into detail that might not really be of great benefit at this point. But I do know that I believe Waukesha has hired people trained in both areas, and they do find them to be quite compatible and do not find that there are major philosophical conflicts or differences in delivery of the program or curriculum.
I mean, that was my concern, that the parents that spoke seemed pretty familiar with and concerned about getting the authentic Montessori experience. And if we have a mixture of teachers and the parents are concerned, this is authentic and this isn't, I don't want to get into that kind of a conflict if we can avoid it.
I don't think you need to worry about that. I think they are referencing more those schools or organizations who use the term Montessori and don't have people who are Montessori-trained or certified individuals delivering that. Because as we mentioned before, that name doesn't have a trademark, so virtually anybody could use it if they feel that it gathers some appeal from the parents.
And I'm a little concerned that, and I don't know if this exists and maybe I missed it, that there's not a more complete description of what the actual program is, so Montessori. People that are familiar with Montessori will look at what we're going to do and know that they're going to be comfortable with what we're doing.
It's very teacher-driven, and in the conversations that I've had with families who have been calling me, their overriding concern is that it's a certified teacher because that individual will be able to come in, will be familiar with the materials, will be able to set up the classroom. Their issues aren't so much from a programming model because if they have knowledge or background on Montessori, they are choosing this. Their concern is that the individual is certified. So it's not an inherent question about the program model, it's about is this individual going to be qualified to deliver it and do it with integrity, to use that expression?
And I have just a couple of questions about the specialists. I know you list the FTEs. Is that the actual class time per school? I mean, I would assume that traveling to and from a place eliminates the useful FTEs for someone in another building. So if someone is .07 here, travel time is going to make that actually a bigger number. Is that true or not?
That, that would not be true. Yeah, actually, when you look at our specialist minutes, they actually, all of our specialists teach a little bit less than, for example, an elementary classroom teacher in terms of minutes per day. So they all teach a little less. They get compensated additional money if they have to travel twice in a day. That's up to $500 a semester. So if someone traveled twice every day for a year, they would get a little less than $1,000 to compensate for the loss of preparation time. So what they lose is preparation time and we compensate them for it.
Okay. And in the financial scenarios where you list the cost of teachers and aides, is that the salary and benefits for a mid-level teacher, low or high?
I tend to, you know, I don't recall specifically when I prepared this, but I tend to use a master's with step five as my assumption when I prepare salary.
And that is?
So.
That's higher. That's higher than what we use for budget.
But I tend to budget high. I worry.
You were learning from Mr. Mack. He worries too.
So for example, all the numbers that.
Keeps you safe.
Yeah. Hopefully, we would be hiring below that.
Okay. And for the administrative support, is that a principal position?
That would be the administrator of the building, correct. So wouldn't, I don't know if he's a principal, but he would provide the administrative support.
Principal role, yes.
So in this particular case, we're opening a school without a traditional principal?
Traditional, yeah. I mean, we don't.
We're opening a school with someone we believe can sort of, can go in, evaluate staff, respond to parent concerns, assist students in responding to their concerns. And we think that Mr. Hoise is very capable of doing that. And he's also, has the advantage of being on-site. And much like the way in which we staff the Tosa School of Trades administratively, there are backup administrators, you know, within the building. I know that Mr. Anderson and Mr. Hoise have both been called to assist administratively to respond to things within that building as well. And I think I'm on the list somewhere. So, but.
And again, the idea was to not add administrative staff to do this.
I have one other question. Oh, you talked, you're hoping to open three classrooms, is that correct?
Correct.
Is, are the remodeling costs still pegged at $100,000 or has that been refined by now?
That has not been refined.
It's still the neighborhood costs.
Neighborhood as in plus or minus 10%, 20%, 30%?
I would have to defer to Mr. Johnson.
Exactly. I think that's a good question for Mr. Johnson, so.
I mean, a lot of the demo has been done, quite a bit of it, and that's just staff time. So I think he stands by that $100,000 mark. I can't give you a give or take. I mean, we can certainly give, try to get a more accurate number, but I doubt that we'll be able to because we're not going to do any construction of the rooms until we know that there's an.
But for me, it would be, I would be more comfortable knowing really what it's going to cost. I mean, estimating the remodeling costs of a building is just standard practice. It seemed to me that we could have someone come in and say, it's gonna, you know, we're going to need to spend this much to remodel this space into this kind of environment. I'm not sure why it remains an asterisk for so long.
Because a lot of it's being done by in-house staff. So to put it, I mean, I guess I, I can't give a good answer, other than I'm relying on Bruce Johnson for his expertise and making a determination based on all of his experience. You know, I'm sure we could pay somebody, and he has worked with an architect who I've met with and we've met with regarding that as well. But again, we said, let's not begin architectural work until there's an approval process because we don't, we don't want to pay architectural fees when they might not be needed at this point.
Okay.
Board members, anything further? When we were here last, the idea was put forth that this would be voted on at the second meeting in January, and there were a lot of things to be done. What has been done since that meeting and what's left to be done? And is this going to actually be ready for a vote at the end of this month?
Yeah, I guess we've, you know, begun drafting the mechanics of the admissions policy, you know, in terms of getting that document ready for, well, its publication. I think we probably need to be adding to that, some more programmatic description in terms of a brochure for parents and admission application form that needs to be put together, which we would.
So I would say the answer is yes.
Yes.
We will be ready for a vote at the next meeting.
But, yeah, those materials will be prepared.
Parent information meetings? And then also promoting the application or enrollment process?
Are parent information things, meetings, things that have already happened or still have to be?
I think what happens soon after that board meeting.
After that.
So we really have the pieces in place, spending improvement, go out and recruit, basically consistent with the kindergarten roundup timeline approximately.
The month of February, coinciding with open enrollment. So because it's a large enrollment, we feel we'll still be able to have some opportunity to have public forum with parents to help share that information, so that they can make an informed decision.
All right. Board members, anything? Mr. Kroner?
Since you brought up the additional documentation, I'm just going to mention that I'm a little disappointed that, you know, for the last two schools that were open, we received pretty comprehensive school proposals before we were going to vote describing some of the things that you're talking about preparing for the next meeting. And so far, you know, this is what we have for tonight, is this little two-page proposal. And it's hard for me to make a decision on something like this without having a more complete proposal in hand. I know technically this doesn't fall under the charter school policy where it requires a proposal be submitted to the board. But, you know, I would be happier to proceeding with a five-year plan expensive with this one involving the education of kids if we had, you know, some kind of substantial report that described how the school is going to operate, the curriculum that was going to be involved, you know, the whole thing. So I know that we're going to move ahead and vote on this, but I just think the boards need to decide when we move forward with programs like this, even though technically it's not a charter school, we have to decide what kind of criteria we're going to put in to make these decisions. And I'd like to see us in the future, you know, move forward and require some kind of a standardized report before we open a new school.
Board members, anything further? All right. Thank you very much.
Well, I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but given the hour, I'm wondering if we can table numbers two and three under the superintendent's report.
I don't believe we can table the WASB review time. I'm trying to remember, what is the date of your convention, Mr. Meyer?
Next week.
Yeah. It has to be done tonight.
I'd note that we're ahead of schedule, because Dr. and I, Earl and I estimated.
So. So we do need to undertake item two under the superintendent's report, which is the Wisconsin Association of School Board Resolution Review. Mr. Meyer?
Uh.
Would you like to take community comment first? Please. We'll take community comment on the Montessori program.
Thank you. My name is Tracy Potchabrowski, 2420 North 89th. See, I don't even remember where I live right now. It's like, I just wanted to say that, kind of a point to Mr. Kroner, that the Montessori isn't so much this tight programmed curriculum that you can really box. It is a total kind of philosophy, a leap of faith into the teachers and what that, what your building kind of stands for. My children spent four years in Montessori, and if this option was available for me at the time, I would have totally went for it. I think if you build it, they will come. There is a very strong Montessori following here in Wauwatosa. I have a lot of friends you draw from, Children's Workshop, which is a huge Montessori preschool. And those parents are dying to continue that for their children at the grade school level. And so I just think that this is just really exciting for Wauwatosa and gives even more options to parents. And so I just urge you to weigh on that. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there any further community comment on the Montessori proposal? All right. Thank you very much. We will then move to item number two. Mr. Meyer?
I went through the proposals. I roughed out my draft answer. Dr. Erdl went over it with me. And I had one answer or one position where I had no recommendation. And he gave me a yes, and there were two positions where he changed what I recommended. I, my written materials are actually at home. Dr. Erdl has the questions. If you wish to go over them, one question at a time, we can, or I can, however you'd like to proceed.
Do any school board members have strong feelings on any of the resolutions, having reviewed them? Any comments you'd like to make to Mr. Meyer? I don't know that we need to go through all of them unless someone makes, yes.
I trust Mr. Meyer and Dr. Erdl, and I would only ask that after the convention, you give us a brief overview of.
And what the decisions were, yeah. And Dr. Erdl, I'm sure you collaborated with Mr. Mack on the financial questions, et cetera, et cetera. So it seems pretty boilerplate, so we'll be okay.
Mr. Kroner?
So I'm confused. Do you have a list of decisions and votes that you are going to make at the meeting?
Yes. Yes, because there's 18 resolutions.
Is there a particular reason why those weren't shared with the board before this meeting?
Oh, they were.
They were. He's the board.
Oh, I have the policies, but.
Purpose of this item is to discuss those and give input into the decision-making. There certainly have not, the votes have not been made yet, so certainly.
Oh, correct. The votes are next.
Mr. Meyer, as the representative of the board, could.
But I thought, I understood him to say that he had taken positions in speaking with Dr. Erdl on each of these.
Well, he knows how he's going to vote.
Those are plans. His planned positions.
I wanted to do my homework and have a starter list. I could have just taken his recommendation and said, that's my recommendation. But I wanted to see how I would do on my own before the superintendent provided his recommendation. And so.
And now we're here for board recommendations.
Right. And there were, there are 18 resolutions. The, my initial recommendation differed from Dr. Erdl's recommendation on two resolutions, number eight and number 16. And with regard to number 15, I didn't have enough knowledge to recommend one way or another.
Could you please just go through and tell us what your plan is at this time?
Okay. You want me just to tick them off? Resolution one would be no. Resolution two is yes. Resolution three is yes. Four is no. Five is no. Six is yes. Seven is yes. Eight is no. Nine is no. 10 is yes. 11 is no. 12 is no. 13 is yes. 14 is yes. 15 is yes. 16 is yes. 17 is yes. 18 is yes.
With that information, Mr. Kroner, are there comments you'd like to make on the, on Mr. Meyer's plan? What his, his positions on it? Do you have alternate positions that you would like to propose?
Not at this time. I just was confused by the process. I thought he was going to be submitting board positions and not.
Oh, yes, it is a board position.
A board position. That's why.
But why wouldn't, I don't understand why we wouldn't have a chance to know what the board, proposed board position was going to be before we came here tonight.
I believe this is the way it's been done every year. The board, the resolutions are presented. Mrs. Weber perhaps can provide some history.
We always appoint a delegate, and it's usually someone who's had some experience on the board. And we have the information presented to us, and if we had any concerns, we would just let the administrative office or the delegate review it. But very important, the, there is a good deal of discussion on every resolution, and you may change your mind after you hear some of the discussion. And there's always a time limit, and then we are always reminded, because I served for a number of years, that remember, if you don't finish, we're staying till you finish. And usually that, that's a little humor in there, but that's, you got the business. But I really think, and I think, Michael, you've been a delegate before. And I know Sharon has. I valued that discussion on the floor.
My only purpose in chalking up a list of what I thought the, what the decision would be was to just do some homework ahead of time before we came here. I would have, for my personal benefit, preferred to not have done anything and just have you all tell me what you wanted. And then I'd just write down your answers, and we could talk about it for quite a long time. So, you know, in the event that perhaps we ran out of time or whatever, I wanted to have a start. And I was, you know, and then where there was disagreement, there was a difference between what my answer was and what Dr. Erdl was. He explained to me his reasoning, and that made sense to me. So I said, okay. You know, and, and, you know, and there was one where I just didn't even have enough to venture a thought about one way or the other. So in no way was my making this list creating the position of the board. That is why we are here, is to create the position of the board.
Okay.
Mrs. Weber?
And if it, would it be satisfactory, please, if Mr. Kroner has some thought? And if it, would it be satisfactory, please, if Mr. Kroner has some thoughts? And I think he should be encouraged to talk with Mr. Meyer or Dr. Erdl. I think Michael would value that exchange if, if you feel there's any, in any of these resolutions. But keep in mind, I, Michael may make a different vote when he gets there and hears some of the discussion.
Okay.
I would have to explain myself when I came back to the next board meeting here, if I do, if I do that. You know, I would have to.
You will.
Feel confident that I could at least have a, you know, a reasonable justification for deviating from your guidance.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
I would just give our delegate discretion to vote on the amendments as they come before hitting at the assembly.
Oh, indeed, there may be amendments. That's, that's correct, and there's no anticipating that unless.
In just a little history, there may be some that will be presented in the, at the convention. They, it was turned down, they have a right to ask for that reconsideration, and it takes a two-thirds vote to get it a vote on the floor.
Anything further? I would just say, Mr. Meyer, an absolute no on number 11. Please don't change your mind on that one. And then on today.
On which one?
Number 11 with regards to open enrollment changes, because that would definitely negatively impact our district in a financial matter. And on others that are financial, financially based, such as four, five, and 15, I assume that Mr. Mack has been consulted or will be consulted before you take a position on those. I would just like to make sure that our position does not negatively impact our bottom line.
For me to deviate from the board's guidance, the waters would have to part, and, you know, all kinds of stuff would have to happen like that.
Thank you. Is there anything further on item two under superintendent's report? Mrs. Randall, are you making a motion to? I'm sorry, I'm losing the language at this. It's not to table, it's to defer to a later specific time to move to the next agenda, the item number three of the policy revisions?
Given the hour and the fact that we have an executive session.
My question is, because these are essentially legally required modifications, are there any timelines or deadlines by which these modifications would have to be made?
Some, some of these policies, I think, for example, the revisions to the FMLA policy, we're already following the law. So the policy's already lagging behind. I don't think we're in violation not to have the policy updated, it's just not as clear to an employee who might read the policy. So, no, I don't, I don't believe it's putting us in any jeopardy because we are continuing to comply with any, any current legal obligation.
Then I believe we could, by unanimous consent, postpone this to a definite time, which would be the next agenda. Mr. Kroner?
I really object to postponing. I mean, we're here now, I don't think it will take that long. I would like to get it finished. It's an important policy, I'd like to get read tonight so we can vote on it at the next meeting.
And you're not having unanimous consent, so proceed.
Okay, and I'm going to excuse myself. I haven't, I've been sick and I'm getting better, so I'm on my way.
I would ask, Mrs. Randall, that you discuss.
Oh, shoot.
The subject of the.
John Ray drove me.
I'm your ride. Either have to both leave together, or we both have to stay.
Maybe you can talk to Mr. Kroner.
I bet we can kill the quorum if we work on it.
Can we please proceed then with item number three? Policy revisions. Dr. Erdl and Mr. Chaney.
Yeah, perhaps the best way to do is to just kind of go through them as a group. A large number of these policies are small language updates due to policies, and I think I draw your attention to them, it's to add in many of our policies that touch on health-related matters, whether disability or our health insurance plans, or physical examinations, or medical leaves, to add a component that we will not discriminate against people because of any genetic information and testing that we might obtain. It's an act called GINA, it's the Genetic Information Nondiscrimination Act. And so if you see these group one policies, we are simply adding that when we employ the superintendent and we have a physical exam, we won't discriminate based on genetic information. And that theme would carry through all of the group one policies. I'm going to leave for a moment the human growth and development policy for later comment. Again, the privacy protections for self-funded group plans, and the privacy protection for fully insured plans, because we have both kinds of policies, we need to add a policy for our fully insured dental plan and EAP, and one covering our self-insured, health insurance, which guarantees protections and privacy, in part extended by the Genetic Information Nondiscrimination Act. The FMLA policy is just incorporating in the statutory rights of our military employees and allowing them to take family and medical leave in response to caretaking for wounded family members. And that's an obligation that we have. And again, the environmental health and safety program, there were some statutory updates regarding purchasing items with mercury in it, which I know that Mr. Johnson is complying with and aware of, but does need to be incorporated into policy. The last policy that I want to present is human growth and development curriculum. And the policy as you see it presented really is just an incorporation of our statutory reference, our statutory responsibilities to ensure that that curriculum is created in compliance of the statutory standard and reviewed by a committee of community members. That is an update, that obligation in terms of review by community members has always been there. But there has been one suggested language proposal by Mr. Kroner, and I'm going to pass out what that suggested language change was, and suppose read it here for the record, and just kind of briefly.
May I have the floor?
Yes.
I think we should end discussion of this item. It's been presented. I think it's a failure of civility to insist that it be presented tonight. We have one sick board member, the hour is late. I don't see the purpose to this, Mr. Kroner, other than maybe you just don't like to get along with everyone else.
Mr. Meyer, I don't believe that's necessary.
Well, I, no, it is.
A personal comment. I understand your position. I understand your position. I believe that what we need to do at this time is get the language. We don't have to have extensive discussion tonight, but having it presented tonight would allow it to be voted on at the next meeting where the discussion could take place.
What's the point? What is the point to treat people this way?
I don't feel maltreated, Mr. Meyer.
I do. You were allowed to show up late. The rest of us probably could show up, should leave early, but then we'd miss what may be the most important item on the agenda this evening. Is it all about what a few people need and about, not about what other people need? I don't understand the equity here.
I believe that we could have been done with this item by this point, had we not had this digression. I understand that you're frustrated because of the hour.
And you know, that's just a snarky remark.
I would say, no, it's not.
It really just is. Yes, it is.
Mr. Meyer, for the record, I was not here tonight at the time, but the meeting started because.
You know, if that's what matters.
I was taking my son to a school event.
Okay.
So I apologize for that.
We respected the fact that you couldn't be here.
Can we please move on with the agenda, so we can finish this meeting and get to the important part which you referenced? Mr. Chaney, would you please pass out the item that you have? Thank you.
Again, recognize that this is really only for a first read of the policy, so this is just a reading and not a request for approval of this amendment or the policy as a whole. But what has been suggested by Mr. Kroner was a inclusion of a standard in terms of formulating the district's human growth and development curriculum, which is in addition to the state's requirements, and I'll read it, "To include instruction regarding understanding of sexual orientation and gender identity, provide resources for students who have additional questions about these issues, and identify and discourage discriminatory and/or bullying behavior based on sexual orientation or gender identity." This is only an additional in terms of the human growth and development policy, although I would point out that it is wholly consistent with our obligations under other board policies to prevent discrimination based on sexual orientation, and also to prevent bullying. And so this is an addition that is consistent with our other policies.
Where would it go?
It would be item J.
So in essence, on page two, after the underlined letter I, and before we start crossing out capital letter A?
I believe that's correct. I'm just trying to get to the correct.
Yes.
The placement within the policy is, was, I just, I, I had made it J just to pen to the end. Whether it should be placed somewhere else in the policy, I don't know. I don't have a really opinion on it. I don't think it matters.
Well, I guess I don't understand. Are, are we saying that, is this being introduced because it's going to be made as an amendment to the motion when the, when the policy comes up for actual vote? Are we being asked to consider if we should agree to include it at this point in time so that when the motion comes forward, it will include this language? What's the, what's the status at this point in time?
I, well, I guess you.
I'll answer that. My understanding from Dr. Erdl was that this was now part of the recommended policy, and that it would be voted on at the next meeting. Well, I don't understand.
I don't know why, I don't know why it wasn't printed out and presented as the complete policy. You'll have to ask Phil about that.
Well, I can see what was presented as the recommended policy by the administration. I see one board member who was interested in having one paragraph added, and.
I have discussed, Phil's going to have to speak up at some point, but I had discussions with Dr. Erdl and talked with him about this over the weekend, and he said that.
Well, I thought.
He said that since this was a supporting document, that the changes could be made and presented at the meeting.
Well, I thought you said that publicly at the meeting earlier, I said, I thought that you said you didn't talk with Dr. Erdl privately, so that kind of surprises me that you had that conversation with him. Seems when there was a room full of people here, you wanted to make it very clear that you don't, you make it a point not to talk to Dr. Erdl privately, but now you're telling us that you have done so.
I did in this instance for a document.
Then your position from earlier this evening is inconsistent, and your behavior is inconsistent with the statement that you made when there was a room full of people here, and it's interesting that now you're making this statement when the room is completely empty.
And that's related to the substance of this motion, how?
There is the motion, first off.
The substance of this, I mean, Dr. Erdl, will you please speak up? And just tell me, at least clarify what you told me.
My intent was that it would, I mean, when I mentioned to Dan to bring it, that you can, either he can bring it up as part of it, I mean, I, I wasn't intending to bring it as part of the policy, but I think, John, your second question about for the board to consider it to be part of the policy. So out of discussion, I mean, generally, there's a discussion on first readings of policies. So this is the discussion that was brought forward to have as part of the discussion. Mr. Kroner, there, Kroner had requested it. Dan says legally it fits, I support it. I think it's, I don't see any problem with it, controversial as it may be. I don't, I think it supports legally what we're obligated to anyway, so that's where it's at. I don't know if that clarifies anything or not. I would suppose, you know, in terms of a recommendation moving forward, I, I think either the discussion here would direct us to incorporate it, or to leave it as something that can be proposed as an amendment, but I think that administratively, we support the concept that it would be brought forward with the first reading, that if this was something that is being suggested by a board member, it is nice to have that proposal in, in writing, so it can be read with the policy and reviewed.
And that was my understanding, was that it was going to be a proposed amendment to the policy when it was presented for voting. Perhaps I misunderstood. And it was being presented today so that we would have time to.
So they had heads up.
Before we voted on whether or not it should be added in.
And I think that it could be really handled either way, because often, obviously, when we bring policies for a read, we do get direction to make modifications and bring it back in a modified form, and certainly either way in which the board would like to proceed, we can bring it back presented either incorporated or as an amendment.
This change will be very controversial, so therefore, I believe we should have the full board present while we discuss it.
Then what I would propose is it would remain as a notification of a proposed amendment to the policy, which would be discussed at the time of the voting next meeting.
So it would have to come in then as an amendment to the recommended policy language? Good.
I believe so. Otherwise, we would have to have the entire policy discussion again at the next meeting and put it on for voting the following time. But if we want to vote on it next time, it would have to come in as an amendment, I believe.
Well, I'll do that if I have to. I'm not comfortable with that, Phil, because in our email exchanges, it was clearly asking you to include this in the language for the, tonight, so that we could just vote on it at the next meeting.
Well, I'm, I'm reading the paragraph, actually. It's Monday's meeting is the first reading, and the purpose of that would be to bring proposed changes for discussion. I also agree that earlier was better. If we come to agreement administratively to recommend it, we can have it prepared for the meeting. It would not require a change to the agenda, because you had asked about, do we need to repost the agenda? No, it's supporting documentation to an agenda, and would not be subject to timeline for open meetings. And then I said, my response this morning, I think it was, is I have copies of the proposed language. So somewhere, that got lost in between you and I in there.
Does anyone have any questions on the other proposed changes as outlined by Mr. Chaney? All right. Then these will all be back before us at the next meeting for a vote. People can review the proposed amendment prior to that time, and we'll proceed in that manner at the next meeting. Item number four, Dr. Erdl. We just need to announce the school board candidates, please.
School board seats four, five, six, and seven on the seven-member board are up for election to a three-year term. Three of the four candidates are incumbents. John Ray, seat number five, is not running for reelection. All four of the candidates will be running unopposed in the April 5th election. There's only one candidate filed for each open seat. It is not necessary to hold a primary election in February. The candidates are seat four, Mary Jo Randall, seat five, Tom Gerus, seat six, Sharon Muehlfeld, and seat seven, Lois Weber.
Thank you very much. I would call for community comment, but there are no members of the community present at this time. We would now adjourn into executive session to discuss administrative contracts, statutory exemption to Wisconsin Open Meetings laws contained in section 19.8, Act 160. Is there a motion to adjourn into executive session?
No more.
Thank you, Mrs. Weber.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Muehlfeld. Excuse me. We'll have to take a roll call vote. Mr. Kroner?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
And Mrs. Feat?
Yes.
We are now in executive session. I get the orders.
At 12?
At 12:20 a.m.